All right, everyone. Let's, are we live with everybody, Rick, I assume? Let's call the order of the town council work session for the 24th of November. It's four o'clock and we begin with planning commission decisions for the 17th of November. Anybody have any questions? Nothing really happened, so we'll not have a call up this evening. Legislative review, the amenity club ordinance and memo, Tim?
This ordinance, if adopted, would extend for six months. The current moratorium on the submission of development permit applications that include a minute and amenity club. This ordinance is scheduled for second reading tonight. As was discussed with the council previously, the proposed amendment to this ordinance is to allow it to become an emergency ordinance. So that if it's adopted as such tonight, the ordinance will become effective immediately. And staff would like this to happen because otherwise the more the current moratorium will expire before the new ordinance kicks in. So it is staff's request that the ordinance be adopted with the changes as set forth in the agenda packet.
Excellent. Thank you, Tim. Any questions? No? Good with this? All right. We have a 2021 Mill Leve ordinance, second reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So this Mill Levy ordinance is what we do every year related to the adoption of the budget. And this sets how much property tax that this county is able to collect for us. Any questions?
Nope. Pretty much slam dunk, same as every year. Everybody good with this? Second reading? Great. Thanks, Leslie.
Hey, Eric, is anyone else freezing up? I might have to switch my laptop, my iPad. So I'm gonna hang up and I'm gonna come back on my iPad. Okay, bye.
Should we wait for him?
Second reading?
Only Tim Berry wants him here.
Tim's being way too generous.
He's a glutton for punishment.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna give him a second and then if he's not back, we'll, we'll continue. Actually, the next couple of things aren't that big of a deal, anyway. All right, let's go to the 2020 model traffic code adoption for second reading, Tim.
This ordinance, if adopted, will replace the town's current traffic code, which is based on an older version of the model traffic code published by CDOT with CDOT's new traffic code. It also makes certain local amendments. I want to point out to the council that when we say adopting by reference, what this, what it means is, I don't know if you can see this, this book is, I don't know, 75 pages long. This is the old CDOT traffic code. We don't want to have to type an ordinance that has all of this in it. We would rather adopt it by reference by simply referring to it. And that's what it means. So you don't have to, whether it's a building code, an electrical code, or some other kind of published code. We can adopt by reference by simply saying we're adopting this without actually attaching it as exhibit to the ordinance, which Helen is greatly appreciative of. There are no-
I did not know that. I'm sure Jeffrey knew it, but I did not.
That's what it means. I didn't, I hadn't mentioned that before. So this ordinance will adopt the new traffic code and amend it. There are no changes to the ordinance from first reading.
Excellent. Any questions? All right, Jeffrey, I don't know what you did, but you're coming through in 4K right now, man.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the blur might have been better.
Really?
You look good.
Thank you. I spent a little time on myself today.
Unclaimed property ordinance also for second reading.
The town has had for a number of years in its own codebook, in the town code, an unclaimed property ordinance describing how property found by the town staff, whether it's the rec department or the police department or whatever, how that is held and disposed of. The state has adopted recently a uniform, an updated version of the Uniform Unclaimed Property Act that is really somewhat burdensome for local governments to comply with. It does have what I refer to as an opt-out provision in the new state law. This ordinance, if adopted, would conform the town's current unclaimed property ordinance to the exemption in the, in the state, the new state law. In other words, if we adopt this ordinance, if you adopt this ordinance tonight, we can legitimately claim that we are not subject to the state's new law. There are no changes to the ordinance from first reading.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Any questions? No? All right, 2021 budget adoption. Leslie, welcome back.
Hello again. So there is a memo in your packet that describes some of the changes that were discussed at the last time that we have presented the budget and a few housekeeping items that were updated, just like the liability insurance. We didn't have the exact quote at the time, so that has been updated as well. I think you're quite familiar with the revenue assumptions that we had included regarding 2020 projected numbers. Additionally, since then, we have updated some of those projected numbers. The only ones that we're still projecting is what we will receive in the last few days of November as well as December. I'm sorry, I apologize. That is actually updated through the end of October. So we have about a $1.2 million increase in projected numbers from what we've experienced so far in November. That could potentially be used to offset any additional appropriations you might have that are in those projected numbers, such as any additional grants. And then the 2021 budget, you know, as we've discussed, that is based upon the operating cuts that we had made in 2020. And I also just wanted to remind all of council that-
What you doing?
Well, we certainly have no guarantees as to the revenue assumptions we've made in 2021, which includes being 40% down from 2019 in the first half of the year and then kind of switching over to matching 2020. We have the ability to do additional appropriations, adding additional money back to the budget or doing what we did in 2020 and making some additional reductions in the budget. So we always have lots of flexibility in making any changes.
Thanks, Leslie. Any questions?
I'll remind you that we did, and Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong, but we projected for 2020, when we ran all of our budgets for you, we were projecting 40% reduction from 2019 for November and 40% for December. So obviously, we had no idea that we'd be in Level Red and restaurants would be shut down to in-place dining. So we'll probably be fortunate to hit the 40%. But we have a little bit of cushion, as Leslie just said, based on, you know, the fall has been strong and October was a pretty strong. It's not a huge month, but it was a lot better than we've ever seen October be before, so.
It might be better for restaurants than November will be. Any other questions? No, we have Frisco Nordic IGA as resolution. Scott, hello?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you is a resolution to approve an IGA in our governmental agreement with the town of Frisco. We've not had an IGA regarding the Nordic Center with them because they only recently came into sort of management of that facility. Prior to that, it was the Dayton's for many years. And so this is kind of clarifying some of those deals that we have with, with the town of Frisco, including grooming of the rec path and where we turn around between Frisco and Breckenridge, as well as our pass sale rates and other things that we do cooperatively as far as we joint, we sell joint passes where all three local Nordic centers being Breckenridge, Frisco, and Gold Run. You can ski the, all three of those with one pass. And so this outlines those agreements in there and resolution would be approving that starting this season.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott. Any questions?
Scott, where is Alpen Sea Drive? Where's the halfway point?
Where Frisco- It's, it's between, as you leave Farmer's Corner on the rec path, you pass behind the high school, you kind of cut behind, I think it's Farmer's Grove and those, those houses. There's that road that you cross that is actually paved, or sorry, plowed year round, where we turn the cat around, it's sort of the last road you cross before you parallel the highway for, you know, to Gold Hill. That's Alpen Sea Drive.
Hey, Scott, did we raise rates this year for the Nordic?
Ah, good question. I believe there was some discussion of that. I think we, I'm trying to recall that. I can get back to you on that one, Dick.
I just wanted, because I know in the past, we, we've heard about it when we've done that, so I-
Yeah, I, I don't believe so this year. I think, I feel like we raised them last year and did not, but I want to make sure I verify that before I click, before I give that answer.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Scott?
I think it's important to note that town of Frisco is already approved with this IGA.
Okay. Thanks, Tim. All right, then we move on to the sales and use tax system IGA. You think they put you all in order, Leslie, so you wouldn't have to-
That's okay. This keeps it more interesting. So the purpose of this resolution, if approved, would be to allow for a statewide sales tax portal. And the purpose of this is to make it easier and less burdensome for vendors who have a nexus, a physical location outside of the state of Colorado. It allows them to remit their taxes all in one place through an easy upload. And that allows us to implement the decision that was allowed by Wayfair, where we can collect sales tax based upon economic nexus and not physical location. And that helps to level the playing field for some of our local businesses who previously may have not been required to collect and remit sales tax to the town of Breckenridge.
All right, questions?
Leslie, will this, will this potentially improve our out-of-town sales tax collection because it's easier?
It should, yes. We currently have several large vendors that remit on a voluntary basis, but we've not been able to require these out-of-town vendors necessarily to remit if they don't have a physical presence in the town of Breckenridge. So we should see some increase in 2021, once this portal has been widely used.
All right, other questions? Okay. Thank you, Tim and Leslie. We go to public projects update. Hi, Shannon.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. I don't have anything to add to the memo today, but I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Does everybody understand this big gulch drainage maintenance piece? Yes. Okay, I'll take that. Yes.
Yeah.
Anything else then for Shannon? Wow, that was easy. How about Parking Garage Weekly Report? Any, any questions? Did you, do we have that video to show?
I can share that if you'd like.
Yeah. We have a moment. Shannon's got a great time lapse video, a drone video of the garage being built.
Can you slow it down?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry.
Awesome. Very cool. Thank you.
No problem. We'll continue that, so it'll look even more interesting in another six months.
Hey, how long before they finish the, sort of the superstructure itself, the, the precast part?
Right now, we're just, we're targeting December 23rd or maybe a little sooner.
Okay. Merry Christmas. Excellent.
So Shannon, are they working all the way through the winter or do they have to put a hold on at some point?
They generally work through the winter. Today, they actually took a weather day because there was a little too much snow to get going for the precast guys. But generally, we'll be working all through.
They can top it off with a Christmas tree.
And we're gonna put it, there's gonna be a skin, just for those watching, I know there is, but there's gonna be a, a skin, a facade on that thing where it's not gonna look like the one in Silverthorn, you know, the, from Mad Max.
Nope, there is nice natural wood siding and we do extra rendering banners over on the Watson side and one visible from Sotmail, so people can see what it's gonna look like.
Okay.
Yeah, so take a look. It's gonna be cool. Yeah, Rick.
I want to have, during our transportation update, I want to have James come online and give you a quick update of how we're gonna start the winter season, what our status is on our transit routes, and also to share some, I think, good news that we're hearing out of the state that may allow for a little bit of increased capacity on our buses. Not a lot, but hey, we'll take whatever we can get.
That's true.
James, you wanna?
Hi, James.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. Yeah, as Rick mentioned, maybe we'll just start with the good news. We did just learn today that CDOT made a recommendation to CASTA, which is the collective group of resort transit providers, that there was kind of a lot of confusion about the capacity on buses. The short of it is, is that the formula now is based on the size of the bus. Just for council's knowledge, we have 35-foot buses, 32 and 30. So basically, you know, dividing the quotient of, dividing that into, and the quotient gives you 17, 16, and 15 riders, which is an increase over the 12 riders that we had on the buses. So that's the good news, that we'll be able to increase some of the ridership or some of the capacity on the buses as going into the season. The other, the other update that I have, as we discussed at a previous council meeting, we have been challenged to recruit for seasonal drivers this year. And as a result of that, we are gonna have to delay the start of the winter service plan, which was slated to begin on December 5. So we're inside two weeks on that now and we're still approximately eight drivers short. And so that, those eight driver shortage results in being able to, the difference of operating eight buses, if we were full, had your full complement. And or now we can only operate five buses with 26 drivers. So effectively, the service plan that will be able to continue on with is, is much like it's been all summer. It's effectively the summer service plan. We do have the ability with some of the newer drivers that we are bringing on since the summer service, that we have the ability from time to time to put a ghost bus out on some of those routes that we know have higher ridership demand. And so we are kind of mixing and matching based on those ridership patterns as to not leave folks behind. While that has been the case on several occasions here, even over this last weekend, we are absolutely doing everything we can to provide as much service as we can. We're very optimistic about still recruiting some drivers. But even, even if we had eight drivers, depending if they had CDLs or non, no CDLs, it could take anywhere from two to four weeks to really get them ready to operate our buses. So unless there's any questions, that's the update for transit. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has questions.
Questions, Dick?
Hey, James, we've, in the housing committee, we've been talking some about trying to provide the transit department with some employee housing. Do you think that'll move the needle quite a bit in your ability to hire drivers? If we were able to secure some housing for, you know?
Yes, Dick, to answer your question, yes, absolutely. I think that would certainly be one of several things that would help move the needle. It's interesting and just as, you know, every conversation has the word COVID in it, we've learned too, that there's a lot of, you know, this is a high-profile position. And so there's definitely been fewer applications just by, by way of numbers. Last year in transit, we had received somewhere on the magnitude of 115 applications for transit. This year, we only received 43. So there's a lot of people that are making some just kind of life choices, you know, based on COVID and, and other things as well. But housing will absolutely help. That's one thing that pretty much every transit agency in the mountains has some housing component available to their operators, so.
James, how are you fixed for other staff, like snowplow drivers and the other heavy equipment operators?
Um, that's a good question too, Jeffrey. We're currently staffed, we have five of seven seasonal street operators right now. And so we're still a couple of people down. The other thing that, that we're impacted as, as other businesses right now, we have a few people, you know, kind of pending some COVID results. So we've had a few staff out of service. There hasn't been any associated outbreaks within the, within the public works buildings, but just, you know, by contacts and of others. So we have a few people that are not able to be in the mix scheduling-wise. So today was pretty challenging to get everything done, but we are still a couple short in, in streets as well. I did hear on the, the question was raised earlier today at the coffee talk regarding, do we have other divisions that we'd be able to, to provide drivers into transit? And really, the, you know, kind of based on just what I said, we're short in a lot of the other areas as well. So it would just be kind of taken from one area to supplement another area, which wouldn't really make us whole at the end of the day, so.
And when you have a CDL license, there's obviously restrictions on how many hours in a day a person could work in different shifts and things like that too, so.
Hey, James, so I walked home this afternoon and it looked like one of the big plows took a swipe on part of the sidewalk going up Wellington. So from the corner of, of Briar Rose, Harrison, and, and Wellington going uphill, there was a swath of about, I don't know, foot and a half to two feet that was cleaned on the sidewalk up until the top of the hill, and then it just turned to all snow. But honestly, it was great because once I got to the top of the hill, then you had to walk on the street because the snow was really hard. I don't know if that's something that they can just do because it really made it easier to walk, I mean, at least gave you a little bit of area to walk on the sidewalk, so. I'm not sure about steak, but it was helpful.
I don't know, I don't know if that was by design or by mistake, but we'll take credit for it.
Good. Might be something to look into. James, good luck. It's nerve-wracking when you can't fill all those positions.
Yeah.
Excellent. Any other questions for James? Alrighty, James, thank you. And James, tell your staff thanks also. I know it's tough without an, not a, not a lot, not enough staff right now.
Thank you.
Anything else on, on public work, on, on transportation or public projects or anything?
I'll just say, go ahead. Just one thing to change before he leaves. You know, I know today was, we had a, the big dump, but I, I hope we can prioritize Wellington and, because I think more people from, from the Wellington neighborhood, from Gibson Heights, Vista Point, are gonna be walking to work because of, you know, if the bus, bus cargo numbers are reduced a little bit. So hopefully, we can prioritize those two arteries and also the airport road one as well. So, because there is some housing out there now too.
Yeah, absolutely, Jeffrey. I think the thing that kind of, you know, that I'll just say as a, kind of as a little bit of a caveat to this is, we do have quite a few new drivers. So we are working through kind of the priorities, primary, secondary, tertiary ways. So while we do communicate that, sometimes that, that sequence gets a little mixed up, but we will absolutely definitely make those priorities.
Cool. James, thank you.
Eric.
Yeah, Rick, please.
So we're gonna go into housing and childcare, but before we jump into housing, because I got Nicole, we need to get the head nod from the council on a couple issues quickly with her. But also, under housing, I want to make sure, there was some communication with the town. I think some emails that were shared with the council relative to getting clarification on who is in our day camps at the rec center.
Yes.
Especially now that school's gonna be shut down. I know Kelly has been, I believe, talking with Scott Reed. So Scott and Shannon and I have had multiple conversations over the last couple of days. Our, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but our day camps will only allow children in there that are enrolled in the Summit School District. Is that right, Scott?
True.
So there was concern about mixing it with possibly, you know, tourists or guests being allowed to put their kids in those programs, and that's not the case. Maybe in the past, it might have happened, I don't know, but at least now it's not the case, so.
That's great news. Any discussion about South Park kids? Is there any need for that?
We just felt like these kids have been together in the Summit School. And so if we want to truly protect the kids that have been together, we shouldn't be adding kids from other schools that aren't part of that bubble, is my understanding, is the rationale behind our decision.
Fair enough. Any question?
Do you have enough help? Scott? Enough councils or whatever they, what are those people are called? Our youth, youth rec attendants. We have a really strong team right now, but we are ramping up capacity. In other words, we're, since the school district has closed, we have filled in, we have mini camps on every day of the week, you know, school day of the week, so Monday through Friday. Those are, those slots are starting to fill. And obviously, as those fill, we'll need to make sure we're staffed up. But yeah, at this point, we are doing well. Obviously, when the ski area operations ramp up full-time, that may affect us. And so, you know, as with James, you know, there is some challenges as far as getting people into these positions in a way that, you know, we're comfortable. But, but yeah, I think, I think our, you know, yeah, our role really here, our, our role here is to provide childcare, you know, for basically youth through fifth grade is really what it amounts to. And, and provide that in lieu of the school district because this, you know, for the people that are working in this town. So the vast majority of these folks are actually both, you know, scholarship recipients, but also these are local families trying to continue their work and have, have a place to send their kids. That's, that's the intent of the program.
Scott, thanks.
Oh, go ahead, Kelly.
Sorry, Erin, I did just want to say like how much, you know, parents are really feeling like they're making so many difficult decisions every day. And I think that by just allowing local kids to attend these camps, I think it makes them feel like one less really tough decision to keep their families healthy. So I really appreciate that you guys found a way to make that happen.
I, I echo Kelly's comments and, and the importance of these programs. Scott, how are these, how are the programs divided up? Are they in, are they by age? What, what is, what does the structure look like?
By age, basically by grade, if you will. And we have slots for each of those and they have different spaces in the facility there with their own entrance and exits, entrances and exits. So they're all, you know, we all, we run through all, all this goes through the, certainly the state guidelines, but also through Summit County Public Health. So we work very closely with, with Maya and the rest of the crew there to kind of figure out exactly what it looks like and go through each of our spaces. And we've been operating since April, I believe it was, was when we opened for emergency, emergency care providers, child, and have been operating since then. In this summer, certainly, in some of our outdoor summer camps that we, that we offered, certainly there were some folks that were long-term vacationers, if you will, or second homeowners that were enrolled in those programs. So that is to answer Rick's, you know, reference before. That is when we've had people that are perhaps not local school district children in those programs, but they were consistent throughout the week, consistent with the guidelines in the state, consistent with the same instructors and all the protocols that we've, we've essentially, you know, started out in April with to make those things happen. So, but yes, with regard to the mini camps, absolutely, our goal is to provide local childcare for, you know, for the families that need it here.
And what's the youngest? What's the youngest? And what's the youngest? What's the youngest? Is it kindergarten?
Believe it's, I believe five-year-old and so we can have kindergarten.
Okay, great.
And it's really fascinating, like, I know that not everybody has um, kids at home, so they don't all see it, but they're not just running mini camps. I mean, these kids are attending school, some of them half-day, some of them all day. So um, you know, you'll see in when I have my kids at home on Wednesday, you'll see them talking to all their friends on Zoom. And a bunch of those kids are at the rec center in their own little spaces. You know, so they're facilitating their learning and now that's going to be five days a week, right, Scott?
That's correct, Monday through Friday.
That's great.
So it's pretty amazing what they're doing.
You teaching them like life skills, like, you know, snow shoveling and stuff?
They are given time to be outside, but also time to do their schoolwork, which is assigned. So they're doing the autonomous learning.
Jeffrey would like a field trip to his house. I think this is a great thing that you guys are doing for the community. I'm really very important and, you know, it's, it's nice that, that some people can at least hear it tonight and hear what a, you know, what an impact that makes on families in Breck. So thank you for that.
You know, and hats off to uh, hats off to Scott and his team at the rec center. They have always put safety first as a priority for not only our employees, but the, you know, visitors and people using our programs and guests there. If you've had a chance to go to the rec center. Doing a really amazing job of uh, of, you know, keeping things running there. So.
I, I echo your, your comments, Rick and, and Scott, same with Eric's comments. I, this is huge. You know, we take it, we take uh, for granted, sometimes some of these kids have strong internet to, to go to school with and they don't. So having the programs open at the rec center and making that available is, is another piece. And you have any bilingual um, staff that could, could facilitate the, say, a Spanish-speaking child or something? Do you know?
Not to the extent that we'd like, I guess is the answer. Uh, we do have a translator that helps us with some stuff and some people that are very rudimentary Spanish. And we certainly serve, you know, a wide-ranging community in all of our programs with catch and, and the like. But no, we would love to have more bilingual instructors and bilingual youth rec attendance.
Sounds like it's on your radar, which I think is great.
You can always get the Dillon Valley kids to help you with the, the Spanish. They're amazing.
Eric, could we go off uh, off schedule just for a minute while I got James and Scott here?
Yeah, of course.
Why not, right?
I'd rather.
You know, we've had, uh, I think we need to have a quick discussion on the status of our sledding hills. If you open the emails, and I could tell you Scott went out and checked and he has concerns too. There's, when he was out there, there was probably two hundred people out there. Didn't you say that, Scott?
I didn't say two hundred, no. There were, there were definitely people sledding though, for sure.
I apologize.
Good. I mean.
I got a, I got a text from somebody, uh, I think it was Saturday or Sunday, said that, that they counted thirty-five groups. Like not thirty-five people, but thirty-five families or whatever. So.
And you all saw the picture that was taken in the email. So here's the deal, right? It's gonna be what's considered an attractive nuisance right now. Uh, we're in level red. And if we really don't want things that are going to create uh, gatherings, uh, we probably shouldn't operate it. And we should probably figure out a way to close it down while we're in level red because we cannot control the crowds as long as it is allowed to function. And um, and we won't even, just putting signs out there saying it's closed won't work. We'll have to talk about temporary fencing across it or something like that. To, you know, dissuade people. We haven't, have not opened our new one yet on purpose. And uh, we probably shouldn't. So it, I don't know. I mean, if we're really concerned about having an attraction that's creating the crowds that we're seeing uh, in that picture and we know they're out there, then we should probably shut it down.
How's everybody?
Is there a reservation system or something like that that would work? Or there's no enforcing that?
Is it, I mean, do we know for sure? I mean, is, I, I didn't see the photo that you're talking about. Does it, do we know that that's an unhealthy uh, activity there?
Jeffrey, and every other year that thing is packed. We know it's packed. It's always packed. I don't, I don't think it's a shock that that's how it is. It's, it's our deal. It's our hill. It's our property. I don't think it's right that we, we have an attractive nuisance like that right now during level red, you know?
So I, um, I support shutting it down, but I do think we need to be thoughtful and keep an eye on where the people go. Because if we, um, you know, originally we had the idea of having different areas for people to go. Um, in order to spread people out, which I think makes sense, but I also understand if we have too many people where everywhere we have a place for them to go, it gets overrun. And we keep shutting it down, then we're, we're going to be forcing more people into certain locations. So I, we just need to keep an eye on where everybody's going because, and this might get to, you know, a higher level um, view of, of what every of how, how we're handling everything. Because, you know, what do we do when, you know, Blue River Plaza has a lot of people, you know, that could be considered an attraction? Do we shut that down? Like, I, I just don't know um, how what our, what our values are around all of this. I mean, I, I, again, I, I support shutting down Carter Park, but you know, maybe we should take a moment to take a step back of, of how we're going to look at our town strategically and where people can go and where they can't go. Because I, I don't know what, I don't know where they're going to go after this, you know?
I don't, you know, yeah, go ahead, Dick.
I have a hard time shutting it down, honestly. I, I mean, I, I get it, but if we determine that's our only option, then maybe that is, but I'd sure like to try some other stuff because, because people are starved for things to do. The ski area is packed, uncomfortably packed. I mean, some of us had kids that have gone up there and come right back down because it's so crowded last weekend. You know, in, in, you know, it's just the outside activities are huge and, you know, it's locals and, and guests alike. I so anything we could do with the parking? I know some people walk to that hill, but most of them, many of them drive. And can we do some signage in the parking? You know, to prevent some of the creative parking down there and, and maybe even organize it more without brain damage. I, you know, I just don't know. Trying to brainstorm ideas of other ways to control it. Because I hate, I hate just taking it away from everybody like that. Because, you know, they need some, they need that outdoor space.
Is it busy on weekdays? Maybe we should just shut it down on weekends?
Well, I think.
All the time.
You just started. I mean, if you're going to shut it down, it's going to take a little bit of work. And so to, to, you know, do it up and down during the week would be uh, pretty labor intensive because they're going to have to erect some kind of temporary fence across that thing in a couple of locations.
We could, we could sign it, make it a mask zone. Put a sign about socially distancing, you know, we just make some temporary signs.
Put some parking signs, you know, if you're parked creatively, we're going to tow you.
Was parking the issue? What, what is the issue? Is it parking or is it health?
No, it's all the people standing at the top of the hill. Did you see the picture that Brooke sent?
Yeah, uh, Peyton just sent it to me. So yeah, but okay.
You know, here's the problem. When we were talking about this thing about spreading people out and not having enough room on the mountain originally, that's when we were in level orange and, and the level preceding that. And, and our whole thing at the time was if they don't have enough room on the hill, what are we going to do to get a bunch of people um, get a bunch of people, you know, spread out so they can enjoy their vacation? Well, all we've been saying this last couple of days is, we want people not to come here right now because, because it's not the right thing to do. So I mean, Aaron is right in that, what's our message going to be? You know, level red took all of us by surprise. There's no doubt. I did not think I thought if anything happened, it was going to be safer at home, town was going to be shut down and that was it. This, this kiss your sister level where some stuff's closed and some stuff got opened more, um, if, it's crazy, you know? So, you know, I guess here's the question. Is it safe? Is it safe for these people to be at the top of Carter Park's sled hill, standing around like the picture that we saw? They're outside, but there's a bunch of people all right next to each other. They're all walking up the hill, same, same time, same way, one after another, you know? I mean, you've seen the pictures from the ski area. I mean, they're not socially, they're really either. I, I just don't.
Well, they're not in our, you know, we don't control the ski area. We do control, we do control this. And that's why we are getting comments from the public. People notice it. And so uh, Scott, you have.
Yeah, if I may, um, so we looked at potentially even opening um, the runway sledding hill, um, because because we wanted to spread people out and obviously is getting there. We were, both of those hills were closed until yesterday without any snow. So now that Carter Park is open, that's why it's such an attraction. Um, and it really was a lack of, it was a lack of uh, snow cover that allowed it to, you know, that was preventing us from really allowing it to be open, being Carter Park. Uh, the runway sledding hill is not, still not quite ready. We think there's a lot of hidden chunks underneath there. So we're not, that's not open either. And so that's one of the one, that's the reason why is because you don't have enough snow yet. And we do, we are hoping to try to pack it down uh, to, and then get, you know, even make some snow on that to potentially have a nice base and, and have it open. But our goal, you know, the challenge from our side of things is um, either you close it and you enforce it, or you, or you put a close sign up there and and people still go. And that's, that's a challenge for us as well. So, so like Rick said, it's going to take a pretty significant effort to close it. Um, but we think if we get more snow, I mean, Nordic Center opens on, opens on Saturday as well, the Gold Run Nordic Center. So we are still trying to spread people out to the extent possible and do, you know, safe, physically distance outdoors, outdoor opportunities. Um, and I think that's why it's being, it's so popular. Um, that's, yeah, I did speak also with the chief, with uh, Chief Baird about how we want to approach this and and um, Assistant Chief Grass, and I didn't, we don't really have a great answer other than it's going to be hard to enforce it either way, honestly. It's going to be hard to enforce it if it's open, it's going to be hard to enforce it if it's closed.
Ideas?
I'm just wondering, Scott, for um, closing it, that means you'd most likely put a couple fences or something like halfway through the sled? Or what does closing it looks, look like?
Prior to today, when it was closed the last several days, um, it was a number of signs at the entrances, at the, all the, all the major entrances. And James can speak to this too, but it was not a, you know, buck and rail fence along the middle or snow fence or something that we can remove and replace, that kind of stuff. James, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, let me just add to that. Yeah, it's very challenging to, to actually physically close it. For, just as an example, the, the runway sled hill is closed just due to conditions. There's not enough snow on it yet. And as Scott mentioned too, um, for those reasons, we have signage there that said it was closed, but um, somebody today took liberty of moving the signs and they were actually sledding on that um, under that closed condition. It is very challenging at Carter Park, for instance, we, we've tried different things over the years and to very, very degrees of success. But it'll be, it'll be not that staff intensive is, is a deal breaker, but we would have to put some real hard physical barrier across that that wouldn't be easily moved um, in order to really accomplish that. And again, we could, we can do it if that's the direction, uh, but it's, it's a challenge.
And maybe the easiest thing is just some signage, make it a mask zone, tell people to socially distance. And we just expect people to operate on their best behavior.
I feel like sorry, Dennis. Well, I guess I just feel like this is just one tiny part of a bigger discussion that I feel like we need to have because I think a lot of us are being kept up at night trying to figure out like what are we doing here? You know, like, how do we actually get our numbers down so that we are in a better place in um, three weeks? Because that's when we really need to be open. And I feel like every decision we make, you know, we waffle back and forth like trying to make it work. But I think maybe we just need to have a whole discussion on you know, if, if everyone stays home for three weeks, can we really get our numbers down and save the Christmas through March season? And if that's what we're aiming, we can't have an attractive nuisance for the next three weeks. I mean, I just think you know, we can, we can try to talk all these little tiny decisions um, kind of to death, but I feel like maybe we need to step back and take a look at the bigger picture. And if the answer is that we really could get numbers down in the next three weeks and make a difference to all of our community business owners, and then three more weeks after that to the schools and have things open, then we should just make it easy on ourselves and say, we're not going to do any of these things. We're not going to do these little events. We're not going to have the the sledding hill open, you know, kind of, I think it would be better for all of us if we took a more holistic view.
Right, like if um, since the directive from the state is to not have gatherings of more than one household, perhaps that's what drives our decisions. Like, like this one, like events, like pop-up events. If anything creates a gathering of more than one household, we nix it. You know, Kelly, is that what you're?
I think so. I mean, I would love to, yeah, I mean, we have, we have a lot of work to do to get to where we need to be in three weeks. We have not seen our numbers really meaningfully decrease over the last month. And we've put in place many of the mitigation measures um, three weeks ago. And I'm very concerned that uh, we're going to look back in three weeks and still be in this exact same position. I'm very, very concerned about that, like can think of little else.
And you know, Kelly, I, I'm going to tell you, the problem is coming from the state, it's a mishmash. I mean, in, in the end, nobody's doing anything about lodging. It's gonna, it's too hard for the town of Breck to do lodging, just us. The county decided this afternoon that they didn't want to displace any more workers, so that's not going to happen. So I mean, we can make some, we can make some minor philosophical decisions about little things like this, but in the end, a good portion of the economy stays open no matter what. I mean, I don't think any of us are willing to say we're going to shut everything down. I mean, I'm not, you know, so these little decisions. I, I don't know that we have more than, than these things to talk about. You know, we have to handle things like kids at the rec center, which I think the staff's doing a great job on. You know, I think, I think this is a one-off. I think we sign it, tell people to use personal responsibility and call it good on that. All these other pieces, you know, that really, the big pieces that really could affect our numbers are not being taken care of anyway. There's going to be a ton of people in town over the next four days. No matter.
You know, like first, a couple of thoughts come into my mind as far as when I, when I offer my conclusion at, at the end of this. One, I think it's going to be difficult. It's going to be difficult to decommission it. You'd have to do snow fences or something like that, that would be easily moved. Two, I think, I think people are going to need, I mean, we, we we're, we're letting them come here. And, and I think all things considered, that is the least dangerous activity if it's done with any semblance of a responsibility than a lot of other things like that, that uh, you know, that are happening in our community. So for me, I would, I would sign it. I would put warnings, please offer, you know, to avoid closure of this thing. Wear a mask and, and uh, social distance. I, I just hate the thought of, of uh, if we're not willing to shut down our lodging, if the county's not willing to shut down their lodging, ski area we know is advertising uh, lodging, uh, you know, fire sale, fire sale lodging in the, you know, after Thanksgiving. So we got these people here, they have to make reservations at the ski area. I just I'd, I'd sign it and hopefully ask them to behave responsibly and, and think this is the lesser of several evils. So yeah, I'd, you know, that's me.
You want to see how many people agree with that approach? And we can get out there and get signage going. So can we just see how many would agree that we ought to just try to sign it and see if we can control the behavior that way now? Uh, one, two, three, looks like we got five of you at least want to do that. So.
Okay, so let's do this. Let's move on from this. Let's finish what we have in front of us. And that's, let's go to our larger COVID discussion. So we can sort of get to Kelly's point and see if we can put a, put a finer point on that with some of these other things that we need to talk about, like, you know, the assistance package and, you know, what, what we can do to govern these things going forward.
All right.
All right. So let's do the housing and childcare update. James, thanks, and thanks, Scott.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to be a COVID break.
Nice.
Nothing COVID related over here. Um.
Well, I bet we could find something.
Yeah, just fun, um, code things, which is super riveting. Um, so, uh, we had a, two committee meetings. Actually, we had one on the 10th and a special meeting on the 18th. And, um, I'm just going to go through the one item that I wanted to cover with you guys on the 10th and then, um, the, then we can go over the other item on the 18th. And then I can answer, um, any questions that you guys have about anything else in the notes. Um, specifically on the 10th, um, we discussed our fee and lieu policy. Back in May, we adopted a new housing code and it is based off of employee generated. And in the code, we said, okay, if you are required to mitigate less than one employee, you could pay a fee and lieu instead of having, having to buy unit or develop a unit. Um, we don't have a fee and lieu. So, um, right now if someone does an addition or, um, you know, does something to create a very small mitigation amount, um, then they, there's not really, uh, fee to assess. So on the 10th, we brought to the committee, um, a fee and lieu proposal that a lot of communities use that have fee and lieu based on, um, market affordability gap. And what that means is it's really the difference between for the same sized home, what is the market price and what would be affordable to a household at, um, a hundred percent or eighty percent AMI and what that difference is. And that's how you calculate, um, the fee and lieu number. In the meeting, um, I, I proposed starting at a hundred percent AMI as just a starting point. And then the committee gave really good feedback and we discussed, um, you know, the need in our community is really at eighty percent AMI and below. So, um, we, uh, I, I calculated what that would be to change it to an eighty percent AMI household, um, to calculate the number. And the difference there, um, a hundred percent AMI was $210 per square foot. And, uh, eighty percent AMI was $250 per square foot. So this would only be applicable when someone was required to mitigate less than one employee in the development code for their housing requirement. Um, so this was really for, I would say mostly additions of space and potentially a change of use. So, um, I, I wanted to get your feedback and see if the council was supportive of this methodology and also using eighty percent AMI. And if so, um, we would bring this back as a first reading in January to add to the code, um, and then a second reading as well. And this would, um, really just be so that we have a fee and lieu in place for when someone is generating less than one employee.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Thanks.
Any questions?
Should we move on?
Okay, yes, the other stuff's probably more.
No, 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 people might have questions. Don't, don't pay attention to me for God's sake.
That was well said, Nicole. We, you know, we really did think it was important to get a more realistic approach by moving that a hundred percent to eighty percent, so.
Thanks, Doug.
Anyone else? All right, move along. Thanks, Nicole.
Yeah, one other quick update. Um, the special community meeting we had on the 18th. Um, we, we've been talking about developing on the public works site, um, to provide, um, you know, town, town of Breck housing. Uh, I think that the conversation a couple before this one was prefaced really well that we, um, are in need of housing to really fill these critical jobs in our community. And, and Rick said, how quick can you build me housing on the public works site? And so, uh, we worked with Public Works, Chris and Shannon, and Chris did a really good job at doing an analysis of the public works site and, and really what it would take to build out there. Um, and, uh, as we were looking at it, we, it is definitely a great area, but it has some challenges that, um, we really felt like a master plan would benefit for that area because there's a lot of area over there. And, um, it, it deserves a good look. And there are some challenges with, um, soil and topography and, um, just certain things that would make it difficult to build quickly and, um, and super, uh, and that would impact the cost. So, um, so the next kind of thing we started looking at was, well, what would it look like to look at block 11? And, um, potentially do a phase two of, of tucked back, um, by the commercial next to Coto flats, kind of a phase two of Coto flats. Uh, and the reason we looked at this is because we looked at it, um, from a cost perspective and it would be potentially thirty to thirty-five percent, um, less expensive to build, uh, phase two of Coto flats. And it would save, um, our timeline about a year. Um, just given the fact that we have the plans, the utilities, the grading has already been done. Um, but we wanted to make sure it was still like, you know, in line with that area. And, and if it could kind of fit back where we looked at maybe putting some, um, apartments before. We wanted to get the full council's feedback. The committee was supportive of this approach. So we can get housing uh, quickly, um, available to, you know, local staff and, um, local employees. Uh, since it is definitely still a critical need, uh, and it can definitely be done much quicker and it would definitely fit into the existing landscape that's out there. Uh, so, uh, that, you know, we'd like to hear the council's thoughts on my graphic that I submitted. I am not an architect. Um, but that's definitely a conceptual idea of, of how it would look and where it could be placed. Um, and we'd like to do potentially some type of shared parking model unbundled. Um, kind of where there's already existing law, just kind of expanding that existing law. So, um, we'd love to hear your feedback if you agree with this approach of, um, doing a master plan for the public works site. So we can take advantage of that full area and have a really great plan for kind of the existing conditions on how to move forward. And, um, in the meantime, move forward with a, a small project of an extension of Coto flats out at block 11.
Question, yeah, go ahead, Rick.
I would just add to this that this is, uh, right now we're targeting for Breck employees, but if we, if we parallel do it, uh, planning for block 11 while we quickly build something on, uh, Coto flats that resembles the two buildings that are already there. Uh, you know, if, if we're able then eventually to build something on public works, but it might be two to three years from now. Once that's done, we could turn that other stuff we were using over to the general public for rental. Uh, because we wouldn't need that many units total. So, um, you know, they'll, it'll serve value well into the future on that.
Everybody good with this? Nicole, are those your orange squares?
Those are my orange squares.
Very nice. Can we have a different name? Since counties.
You can do whatever you want.
It wouldn't be county town on these.
Yeah.
Yeah. What do we call it?
Toto.
Oh, is that where they?
Just town, town, that county town.
We could call them the Oz Apartments.
There you go.
Uh, everybody good with moving along with these two and then starting to design out at public works where we have property we should be using?
Yeah, I think the master plan is a terrific idea. Thanks for looking at it.
Makes sense. Good, all right.
Thanks, guys.
Slam dunk. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Uh, summit stage meeting, anybody have any questions on this? I'm going to guess no.
I just have a question, Eric.
Go ahead.
Or Rick or Shannon. I'm just curious, the, uh, county mass transit sales tax, does that have a sunset?
No.
Okay. Cool.
It, it, I had a people, I, I wrote Shannon, but I had someone ask, there's no plans in the future, near future to, uh, reduce or do away with the park county, uh, bus?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
There, there are more pieces to the, uh, summit stage part, Carol, that we can talk about some other time that'll, that there's, there's a bunch of things about the way it operates. And we'll fill you in on, but later, we won't bore everybody right now. Um, financials.
So goodie.
Yeah. I mean, the good news is most sectors did really well. And if you saw the other stuff that, um, Rick sent, the May to, uh, the May to September numbers, most sectors actually saw an increase.
Those were actually May, May through October, Eric.
Oh, May through October, sorry.
Yes. So the last column of that does include, um, the October that has been collected to date through November. Um, so as you were pointing out, those were up quite a bit over last year, thirty percent, six percent actually up for, um, those October amounts. And if you look at that, um, I referenced that 1.2 million dollars in my, um, in the budget discussion. And what that means is that sales tax is up about 500,000 from where we had projected based on that October amount. Um, accommodations in excise fund was up about 200,000 and rent was also up about 500,000. So when you combine all three of those sources together, that's that additional 1.2 million dollars that we were not projecting for the budget. Um, also to date for November, real estate transfer taxes at about 815,000. Um, so that was included in there as well. So it does look like we will probably have our best year of real estate transfer tax ever. Um, it looks like that's putting at us at a projected amount of 7.4 a million. And last year to date had, was our best year ever at 7.2 million dollars. I was also able to confirm, by the way, that we did not increase any recreation fees in our 2021 budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So don't forget though, even though we're doing better than we thought we would do, we're still not doing as well as we have the last couple of years. In particular, construction sector and the restaurant sector are both down a lot.
Then obviously December has yet to happen and that's our biggest month.
Right.
So.
And if, you know, being in red over Thanksgiving weekend is going to slow down revenue as well as, you know, we don't know where we're going to get out, so.
We don't talk a lot about the construction sector. Um, what, has anybody heard? Um, about how they're doing or how, um, what happened? I mean, is it just COVID? Is it? How, does anybody have any information about how they were affected? Because that's, they're, they're pretty low too.
If it's COVID, some of it's that we haven't had a large planned project this year like we have in the past. Um, you know, recently we've had Walk Resorts as a large project. We've had Grand Colorado. And so some of that was to be expected. I think some of it is, um, decisions that were affected by COVID.
And remember you were, uh, Peak Gate Hotel was scheduled to start this summer, which obviously COVID pulled the plug on that. And so that, that really, you know, impacted our permits, our revenue and our permits. And then generally, um, you know, and so I think some of the housing and local construction is probably still, uh, going on. Um, but, uh, a lot of these numbers come from the deliveries, right, of the large construction products, the big wood, uh, you know, so if you take a project like, uh, you know, if you're not doing a major project, you're cutting a lot of product out of that, so.
Yeah, I would expect that, um, you know, due to the time that it takes and where the deliveries come into that, that a lot of decisions that were made by COVID will actually continue to see into the next summer.
Okay.
I did the two general contractors this week and they are, uh, single family home builders. And they're booked through 2022. Their business is thriving. So it's got to be the big projects.
I've heard the same thing, Dennis, the, my friends that are the, you know, the bigger, the more established custom, big custom home type builders are, are super busy.
And with those larger projects, they employ, they bring in people, right? How, what are the, does anybody know about that?
A lot of your locals are your, your subs that are working for these private builders. Um, you know, when you look at the, and, and, you know, Dennis could talk to that, but yeah, when we, the major projects, even though the parking and, and the parking structure, correct me if I'm wrong, Leslie, but because that's a town project, we're not paying tax on any of that stuff, right? So that's a, that's a very large project that's taxed exempt. So that's, uh, that's hurting that. It's not one that we could count in as revenues, but, um, you know, a lot of those workers are, come from other areas on these big projects with, uh, you know, the companies, even though a percentage of it is still, is still covered by, uh, local subs, so.
Thank you.
You know, I heard what exactly what Dan and what Dennis and Dick heard, you know, totally, I think our local tradesmen, craftsmen are doing reasonably well. I, I treat, pay my plumber just to get him to come to my house. So I mean, I, you know, he's booked up, so.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions on financials? Okay. See what happens.
Uh, future events.
Follow up.
So, um, we've had a lot of discussion over the last few weeks and, you know, we discussed events at the last council meeting. We said that we were going to, uh, talk about it with the resiliency committee. And, uh, you know, there's mixed feelings on that. I think our goal was to try to remain agile and have the ability uh, to cancel events if need be, um, you know, on short notice and, and any event, even as we were looking at kind of the reimagined snow sculpture and Uller, everybody knew upfront that nothing was set in stone, but, um, you know, in talking with, uh, Lucy and her team and, and, uh, our staff, it's our recommendation, it's a joint recommendation to you now that we go ahead and cancel, snow sculpture and Uller as it's being planned. And, uh, we do that, uh, you know, effective immediately. Lucy, did you want to add anything on that?
No, Rick, you've covered it. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. I would say that, um, you know, we kind of came to that conclusion when we were at level orange. And I think it's just that much more, we're much, that much more emphatic about it in level red. There's just no way, um, it makes sense today.
Did you talk to, uh, last year's Ulla King and Queen to see if they'll serve a second term?
I think we will ask them to extend. But we have, we have reviewed this with the BEC executive, uh, group, small group. And also, uh, you know, Rob Nail and Tiana Wales and, um, Ron, it, everybody's supportive. Everybody's on board with this position. We, we all want to do the right thing here.
So you all, uh, everybody agree that's a good thing to do?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. We want to make sure you're in the loop on this before we go public. So.
Thanks. Thanks, Lucy. Uh, executive session protocol. Tim?
Yeah, that's me. Um, let me just start here. At the town council work session on, on November 3rd, Mike Dudik made a presentation to the council concerning his proposed development of North Gondola Lot and the Gold Rush Lot. As part of that presentation, he asked the council whether you had an interest in negotiating a change to the current lease for the transit center and/or whether you had any interest in paying to add additional affordable housing to Mr. Dudik's proposed development on the Gold Rush Lot. After Mr. Dudik's presentation was concluded, the council went into an executive session. The stated reason for the executive session was to quote, determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and instructing negotiators. This is one of the allowed reasons for an executive session under the Colorado Open Meetings Law. At the conclusion of the executive session, the mayor stated publicly that the council did not want to enter into negotiations with Mr. Dudik concerning either, either the transit center lease or the additional affordable housing on the Gold Rush Lot. The Summit Daily asked to review the tape of the exec, executive session because the paper alleged it was improper for the council to have determined in the executive session that it did not want to negotiate with Mr. Dudik. The paper was provided access to the tape of the executive session as requested. As the paper correctly points out, the Colorado Meeting, Open Meetings Law says that, quote, no adoption of any proposed policy position or formal action shall occur at an executive session that is not open to the public. Here, the precise legal issue is, I believe, whether it was proper for the town council to go into an executive session to determine the threshold question of whether it wanted to negotiate with Mr. Dudik or not, or whether such a determinate. or whether such a determination was the adoption of a policy or position in violation of the Open Meetings Law. There is no decision of any Colorado appellate court on this precise issue. However, in support of its position, the newspaper but, provided to the town a copy of a two thousand eleven decision from the Laramore County District Court. As part of its ruling in that case, the district judge ruled that the threshold question of whether to enter into negotiations should be made in public and not in executive session. I have reviewed the trial court decision provided by the newspaper. Because the decision was not or was a trial court level and not an appellate court, the decision is not technically binding on the town. Other trial courts faced with the same question might agree with the judge in the Laramore County case or might rule differently. However, the Laramore County decision is well reasoned. And until there is an appellate level decision on this issue of whether the decision to enter into negotiations can properly be made in an executive session or whether it must be made in public, I recommend that going forward, the town council follow the Laramore County decision and that any council discussion about whether to enter into negotiations on a matter such as that proposed by Mr. Dudick be conducted as a part of the council's public meeting and not in an executive session.
Questions for Tim?
Pretty much, Tim, that was my take as well.
I appreciate that, Jeffrey. You know, one of the, one of the problems is that the Laramore County Trial Court case is not reported in, in anything that you could find. It's, it, the only reported decisions normally are Colorado Court of Appeals or Colorado Supreme Court cases. So you just couldn't find it. And it, it was never mentioned in any of the CML attorney seminars or the like. So it was a little hard to discover. I did appreciate the fact that the newspaper was kind enough to provide the, the case. It is, it's an interesting case. The issue of entering into negotiations was only a minor part of the case. It really had a lot more to do with the selection of a city manager in Loveland and the appointment of a temporary city manager. But the judge did rule, as I say, and until we get some other law, I think we ought to follow it. Just that simple. I don't think that, by the way, that this will be a radical departure for for the town.
So in the future, Tim, if we confronted the same situation, I would then say, does anybody on the council wish to negotiate with the developer on this matter? And if nobody says anything, or if they say, well, can we talk about it, then we have whatever that discussion is out in public.
Correct. In other words, you have, the, the threshold question of whether you want to negotiate or not needs to be made in public. Once that decision is made, then you have something to instruct negotiators about.
Okay.
But or to develop strategies for negotiation. What the court said was until that threshold decision is made, there's nothing really to negotiate.
Right. The, the problem is for a council like ours that doesn't do this for a full-time job every day, we don't know what the others are thinking. A lot of times, we need to talk these things through to see if anybody even understands exactly what the developer is asking. Through those discussions, negotiating points that are vital to the community to negotiate with a developer will come out. So you lose any any, any.
But you don't have to give those points, Eric. You just, like, if Aaron said, well, I would be interested in a negotiation as long as certain conditions could be met. You do not have to reveal those conditions because those conditions would be matters subject to negotiation.
Right, but what if, but since nobody knows, understands what those conditions are, that Aaron is thinking about.
Other council, you mean, nobody?
Yeah, so say Aaron, since, say, in the course of this, Aaron says, look, I'll be okay with this if, if the developer gives us fifty spaces for buses. But Dick said, is thinking, well, I wouldn't do it for less than a hundred buses. But since we don't know what those two parameters are, we then go in to talk about it and it still turns out that we don't want to negotiate because the majority of us don't agree with what Aaron wants. What, I mean, the only way to really talk about this stuff then is to put the cards on the table, which will be in public, which will then affect our ability to negotiate with the developer. So it really, to a certain extent, I think hamstrings our ability and honestly will cool my, will cool my desire to have any kind of negotiation with a developer going forward. That isn't something straight out that I know that, that everybody on the council wants.
I agree with Eric because I suspect that there was more than one of us going into that executive session with the intention of instructing negotiators. That, that was the full intent going in. And after we talked with staff and, and discussed our instructions to the negotiator, it became apparent to, to all of us that, that really the instructions were gonna be not to negotiate, but, but I don't think that was the intent when we went into the executive session at all.
Well, and what does that look like? I mean, do, do we go into a negotiation if four people want to negotiate? Or if we go into negotiation, do we, are we, do we then have to come back with a negotiation? I mean, are we are we saying yes to something before we even know what it is?
Very, very tough, very tough issue in light of the, the court's decision. I don't think that if the council goes into an executive session because it wants, it says at that particular moment, it wants to negotiate. And you get into an executive session where you can talk and you change your mind. I don't think that that's necessarily a problem. But I do think the public is entitled to hear the preliminary discussion. And sometimes that could be difficult. And we will, you know, to the extent that this comes up, we will have to just deal with it on a case-by-case basis, but we need to have the guideposts of this particular court decision.
Fair enough. You know, a lot of times we, we do this stuff to protect the developer too, that doesn't know if they even want to do something. No, you know.
And we may have to go in and out of exec session a little more, too. You may say, well, I got, I wanted this, before I can decide, I want to, you know, determine positions relative. So you want to discuss some conditions and then, and then are we done discussing the conditions and we could come back out and everybody can decide how they want to proceed, if they want to proceed with the actual continuing with a negotiation. And then you could go back in because then you, as a group, you've decided now you're gonna you're actually gonna give the guidance to the person that's gonna do the negotiating for you. So I think there, you know.
Keep in my, keep in mind that the seminal part of the court's decision is the part in the Open Meeting Law that says that no policy, position law can be done in private in an executive session. And that's where the, the issue was a problem here. Because I think the paper certainly would argue that council made a decision in an executive session not to negotiate, which that decision was the source of the, the problem.
Hey, you know what, I, I might be asked, this might be, you might have already answered this. So if we went into that, that executive session and we did negotiate, and then we came out of the exec session and said, okay, we'll do this if you do that, and, and then would be, then would be legal or, or then it would be in less of a gray area?
Well, the, the more I, I think it's a bit of a balance, Jeffrey, to be honest with you. The public, I think, well, I know, is entitled to see most of what you do, most of the decisions that you made on public matters. There isn't except, there are six or seven exceptions in the Open Meeting Law for when you can properly do an executive session. And one of those is for matters that are subject to negotiations, so that you can develop negotiation strategies and instruct negotiators. What the judge in the Laramore County case said, though, is there's nothing to instruct negotiators about or to develop strategies for negotiation until the threshold decision that you're willing to negotiate is
Is solved.
Is solved.
Yeah, yeah.
And once you solve the, yeah, we're willing to negotiate, then you can, I think, properly go into executive session to develop strategies and instruct negotiators. Now, I think if you, if you got into the executive session and in the course of developing strategies or instructing negotiators, you convince yourself that this, we just can't do this for, for whatever reason. I think you come back out, you don't make that final decision. But I think you come back out into the public and then you announce, or you talk about what the decision is. And if the decision is, we really decided not to negotiate, you need to explain that to the public and why.
Government is complicated.
Yeah, unfortunately, this one is complicated.
Yeah.
Well, we use you to guide us through these things, Tim, so thank you.
Well, I'll do my best.
Yeah, we never would have gotten the parking structure going.
Wow, we were good on that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we were good.
Uh, we're gonna do Milne, Eric?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you all.
Tim, thanks a lot. Uh, Mark, you gonna briefly?
Yes, I am, Eric. So you have the Milne and Everleen House Restorations town project on your, as a public hearing this evening. And obviously went to planning commission a number of months ago and now it's in front of you. So just here right now to answer any questions you might have procedural or otherwise. I'm kind of filling in for Chapin on this. Chapin couldn't make the meeting this evening. And Larissa O'Neil from the Breck Heritage Alliance is also a panelist here, so Larissa can certainly provide some more background than anything that the council needs prior to this evening's hearing.
I think the good summary on this thing is, you know, we went back and forth and we had a lot of, there was some pushback that there was too much parking there and that wasn't the intended use of that site. And, and, you know, we scaled that back to two, two spaces plus an ADA space, I believe, total of three. So we, you know, we thought that was a decent compromise. And we've held, held community meetings with the residents in that particular neighborhood to back up and work up to that alley there. We haven't, we haven't gotten great feedback. We still, you know, we're still getting a little bit of pushback that some people think, you know, it shouldn't be three spaces, but we feel pretty strongly that three is the, the right number and you know, that's what we're suggesting that, you know, that we go forward with on that, so. And, and nothing, just to make it very clear, just the, you know, this is a town project. We we wanted to get this thing kind of completed from that regard. This in no way commits the town to funding this project. So you are not, that's a, that's a funding it and approving it are two totally different things in this regard. So that's still subject. We know nothing's happening in twenty one and it's still subject to whatever your comfort level is and the amount of money you have when it comes time to look at funding this in the future, so.
So, Rick, there's no timeline attached to this project, if I understand correctly?
Mark, as far as what we're doing now, is there a timeline?
That's correct. I mean, well.
For years.
Yeah, there, there's no timeline for the actual project. They would have to, we would have to give them capital money, which basically, they did have money for next year to start this project and actually this year as well. And that was take, you know, HA volunteered to put that aside given the COVID situation we were dealing with. So they've been great partners on that and, you know, they'll, I would guess, make an attempt to do it again when things improve and if the council thinks the timing's right.
But for the town project permit, is that a three-year period it's good for, like other?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
I, yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
As long as Larissa's here, I'd just like to hear how the how it was resolved with the neighbors.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, thanks, Dennis and everyone. I realize there are much more pressing matters, but thank you for letting us kind of work this way through the entitlement process. And, you know, we have spent the last couple of years hearing neighbor feedback and even met with the neighbors up until a few weeks ago and feel like we've done a good job of addressing those concerns. I mean, the ones we heard over and over again were about the, the parking reducing it from six and we feel like three is, is a fair number, given that one is ADA and the other two would be used pretty infrequently. And also heard that snow storage wasn't adequate back there, so snow storage has also increased by thirty percent. You know, the one other comment I heard somewhat regularly from the, from the letters and that are included in your packet are, was that this was turning into kind of an office park and that's really not the intent of the project. We are suggesting that BHA move its administrative staff to Milne Park, but it's in spaces that really aren't that conducive to the public anyway. And the reason we're doing that is to support the park, to have it open, to have those buildings open, to interpret what's there. It's not meant to be a corporate office, office space and we're not intending to change the use of that park. We appreciate how passive and how much of a town treasure it is. So those were the three main community feedback points that I heard and I think we've addressed those.
Any other questions for Larissa or Mark? All right, how's everybody, everybody good with going? Four, yeah, go ahead, Dick.
Larissa, did I read in there that your administrative staff that'll be in there is three people?
Three people at most. I would say most, most days it would probably be two, three people at most.
Thank you for meeting with the neighbors and working so hard to mitigate their concerns.
Anybody else?
Just that I'm excited about this project and I'll be happy when it's done and that little park is secured because we certainly don't want to see any more deterioration. It's such a beautiful little treasure.
Yeah, I want to just add that I think it's a great project. I think with increased use comes increased appreciation for this amazing mining history that we have. So I think you're, it's great that you guys are doing this. Um, with the plan itself, I just had, with the parking spots, there's one that's kind of on its own. And what was the maybe logic for splitting the three spots and of that extra, that third on its own, if that's really needed?
Yeah, Carol, there's one that's up at the north side of, or farther to the north. And we placed that one there because it's kind of tucked behind the Milne House, which is on its original footprint. So we don't want to move that building, obviously. And it also gives good access right into the back of the Milne House. There is a basement that's going in there and it's going to be used for collections care, which means Chrissanne will be going in and out and you know, sometimes we have big items, so it's just, it's the easiest way to get in and out. We did work a lot with the town engineering department on the placement of those three spots, so I feel like they're in the right places. There's also ADA entries, entries off the back of both Milne and Everleen, so we wanted to have two parking spaces that were close as well, just conducive to getting in and out.
Hey, what are you gonna do with the, what are you gonna do with the gaming cap?
That's town, a town building, so we have no, no opinion. It's, we would hope, you know, give it back for whatever use the town would have for it.
Clubhouse.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Look, I'll, I'll tell you, my only problem with this right now is where we are today in the community with what's going on. I gotta tell you, I was even a little back that this is even something we're looking at right now. You know, with, with what's gonna go on with our finances. I, I can't, I don't even, you know, there, there's a chance that you'll have to come back to redo this permit before. We have enough money to do anything like this. Um, so honestly, I'd rather this thing got pushed back until we knew we were going to be able to do it, but. You know, it sounds like the council's cool with it. I just. We got so much. And we're in trouble right now. This winter is gonna be terrible. And I don't want anybody to think that this is something that we're doing until things are back to how they need to be, so.
But this, this doesn't commit us, does it, Eric?
No, but you know what? Every time you do anything like this, you make some kind of commitment, Jeffrey. I don't know what's gonna happen, you know, three months from now, let alone forty-eight months from now, when this could, who knows? Who knows? But every P, every time you go down the road and you say yes to something, there is, uh, there is essentially a commitment to it. So. Personally, I'd rather not be seeing this tonight and deal with other stuff we have. I know this is important to Larissa and her gang and they. They have patiently waited and done everything we've asked them to do, but, um, you know, with where we are in the community and the. Comments that we've been getting about other things, it is hard for me to even think about doing this right now, so. With that, we will see you tonight and, uh. Thank you, Larissa. Um, we do have revised Cora administration regulations. Oh, look who it is.
Mayor and council. First time ever on in front of you guys. Um, I am bringing this, uh, proposed change to the revise our Cora. Um, administrative regulations to include our high school scholarship applications. Um, this came after a conversation with our scholarship and grants committee. And wanting to protect the information provided in our high school scholarship applications.
Fair enough. Anything to add, Tim?
No, uh, we've done, done this amendment to try to protect, uh, the confidant confidentiality of personal information. And, um, uh, uh, you know, as Peyton has mentioned, I think, I think we're there with this, this. Uh, amendment to the admin regs. They're Helen's actual admin regs. The, uh, open records law allows the records custodian to have administrative regulations. Helen is the actual records custodian for the town. Um, but, uh, Helen, uh, there she is. She can speak, but it's my understanding she's fine with these amendment to her, her regulations. Council needs to recall to the procedure called out in the code book. For the issuance of administrative regulations does not require the council to approve those regulations. It requires that the proposed regulations be presented to you for your review and comment. Um, at a work session and which is what we're doing here. And if. If council's okay with these proposed admin regs, then we'll go through the actual process of issuing them. Helen, you wanna add to that?
I don't think I need to. Nice job, Tim.
Thank you.
Well, well said, Helen. Uh, anybody have a problem with this? I think this is a great idea. Okay, looks like everybody is good with this. Peyton, Tim and Helen, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now that we've done stuff that's not COVID related, let's get back to what we like to talk about the most. First of all, does anybody need a break? We have some time before the night meeting. Do we need five?
Sure.
Okay, let's take a quick five.
Mute, everybody mute yourself.
Mute yourself and, uh, be back. Let's, uh. COVID update, we got a couple of things to talk about.
Eric, can we, uh, can we tackle the, uh, business and rent relief stuff first?
Yes, we can.
Cause those, we need, uh, we need, I want to make sure we get those handled.
Um, yeah, I agree.
I'd like to, I'd like to address them in two parts, uh, and start off with the, uh, business relief first.
Okay, and before you get started, Rick, I, I'm gonna abstain from this part of the conversation. Um, since there is some potential restaurant relief involved, so I'm gonna. Block myself for the time being. Rick, are you, or Dick, are you gonna do the same?
I will do the same, Eric.
Okay.
Hey, wait, um, uh, yeah, but you guys are the, are the most educated in the workings of, of that industry. I mean.
I know, but I think it's probably they both, I think they both, you know, and it's up to you guys to fill if they have a conflict. On this, but I think they both feel like they could potentially have a conflict and.
There is a.
You know.
Definitely financial conflict. Honestly, Jeffrey, thinking about it, I don't think it's fair to my partners for me just to say, look, I want to be part of the conversation, so I'm gonna forego. You know, anything possible. In the first round in March. Um, there was never really discussion because my business was larger than the twenty-five employees, so it wasn't a big deal. But depending what gets talked about now, I don't feel comfortable. I don't feel comfortable speaking on it.
Okay, does not, does that mean I have to be the mayor? Cause you're gonna be excluded, so.
You are now in charge, no doubt.
Can I depress you ties, Rick?
Yeah, Rick will, Rick will lead the thing.
We'll get you through it. So, uh, Eric and Dick are gonna go out and we'll let you know. Tim, did you wanna?
I, that's fine. Dick, I think you ought to stop your video. Thank you.
The facial gestures.
I was trying to.
All right, um, so here, the first question that I need, uh, to have some discussion with you all is. Um, when we're looking at, at business, what's the industry that we are going to address? I, so let me tell you my rationale for sharing that data with you on, uh, net taxable sales by industry. From May first through the end of October. Um, we had done, uh, business relief in the form of rent relief. Uh, for all businesses, as long as they met certain, you know, smaller business, if you remember. Um, less than thirty, I think the number is thirty-five, Eric said, but less than thirty-five employees. Um. There were eligible in March and also a second one in April. Uh, and so I feel like we addressed, everybody was shut down then. And we addressed, uh, the business relief then. So I wanted to see how did everybody fare from May one? After that, when we were starting, even though May was a slow month, we were starting to look as we were going into what the summer was gonna be. And how, from that point now to all of a sudden where we're at a level red, end of October. What, what by industry, how did they fare? And I made sure that retail was broken down to in-town and out-of-town. Cause retail, I think, is one that people still hear about out there, you know, there's retail. And I think the numbers are there and, and most, a lot of retailers have told us they've done better, right? They were able to put outdoor display merchandise, people were walking around, um, you know, so. I can't guarantee that every retailer did good and honestly, there's, could be other reasons why some do better than others, just like. Some restaurants are more successful than others and, um, but as an industry. They were actually over twenty nineteen. In net taxable sales for that period. Uh, and in-town retail. Obviously, and, uh, obviously restaurants. And lodging did well. Lodging picked it up. We know that and, uh, but restaurants, even with the expansion. Imagine if we weren't able to expand outdoors in the summer, what would have happened to restaurants? But even with that expansion, they were still almost over twenty-three percent down and now they're the ones that are taking the real hit. As we go forward, more than any other industry out there. And so my recommendation to you is that we, this is where we start, that we start a really, our business relief is geared at the restaurant community. Of which we have about a hundred and twenty-five, including coffee shops, restaurant and bar. I should always say bar because bars are still shut down. And they should be eligible again. So, but that's your decision and, uh, I think we need to decide what the industry is first before we. I could, cause that will dictate, uh, what our recommendations are, uh, for funding and how it's done, so.
Do we have any sense how many employees are in those, that sec, those, that sector?
Uh. I don't think we do, but it is your highest employed sector probably outside of lodging. Lodging, obviously, your bigger lodges have a lot of employees with, um. Housekeeping and everything else they do, but we also know restaurants are one of your highest employers out there, much more than, uh, retail.
Are we talking about, are we talking about employees right now or just the business assistance?
No, we're just talking about, uh, our recommendation for employees is gonna be, isn't gonna be addressed to a business. It's gonna be addressed to somebody that's either furloughed, laid off, or can demonstrate a drastic reduction in hours. And so regardless of where they're employed, all right? So that, just so you know, right now it has nothing to do with employees. This just has to do with what industry should we focus on? For our business relief.
Um, looking at the data you sent us, seeing that restaurants are the only industry down twenty-three percent. And then with red restrictions, they're the most impacted. Um, I am, I feel good about focusing our discussion on restaurants.
And bars.
And bars. Question, Rick, do food carts apply under that umbrella?
Uh, probably, yeah. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but my guess is they would.
Are food carts limited right now?
Uh.
Wouldn't think so.
I know, that's a good point too, because they don't have any inside dining, so they actually would be having the same business as always, probably.
Yeah, yeah. To that point, I think restaurants and, and bars.
I mean, we only got one per, really one permanent food cart, right? So.
Right.
I think, right? Just a one on North Main.
Yeah, I think, I feel like knowing, um, that we actually had a really good year as far as people, you know, visiting and the opportunity for. Um. For sales to be made, I think that it does make sense to focus on what's closed right now and. If other groups are closed in the future, then we would certainly take that into consideration, but seems like. The restaurant is the most clearly impacted by this.
I got two of you. How do the other three fill?
Oh, yeah.
Dennis.
I agree, yeah.
All right. Okay, so we'll focus on restaurants at this time. Like I said, there's a hundred and twenty-five of them. Uh, I'll make sure that if, if the food cart is in there that, and they're still open, uh, which I think they are, that we would, uh. They wouldn't be. Uh, here's our recommendation. We want to keep it fairly. Uh, easy like we did in the first one and make it a rent and or mortgage relief type program. That's the way to get money to them and help. I mean, you know, we're defraying costs. Uh, you could defray it in a number of places and. Having a system in place to defray your, uh, a mortgage. Or, uh, a rent payment is, is helping to defray costs where they can put money somewhere else. Um, base, because we set aside, uh, a million dollars and, you know, half of that was earmarked for employees and half for business. Was my understanding that my suggestion would be that we, uh. I think our max amount, maximum amount, um, when we did it in the spring was up to four thousand dollars. So the maximum amount I would recommend for this round would be up to five thousand. Uh, knowing that the, uh, rents for restaurants ju- range anywhere from. Based on some of the data we have from our first round, anywhere from, um. You know, less than a thousand dollars to twenty-one thousand dollars a month, where, you know, those are big places and. But your median is more in that, um. The median is in the like sixty-one hundred, so. But that means at least half of those are below that, so I think, uh, we would have. Enough money there, knowing that not everybody's gonna take the, you know, uh, the full five thousand that we. Would be able to service all of the restaurants and stay below that half million dollar mark.
Uh, Rick, so are we going to be giving, will we be giving more money to, to restaurants that have a higher? Um, uh, cost, higher mortgage, higher rent? Or, or like is, is like a smaller restaurant gonna get a disproportionately larger amount of their mortgage payment than a big joint?
No, it's gonna be based on their, uh, whatever their rent or mortgage is. Pay, and monthly payment is our suggestion. That's how we did it before and it worked well and it seems to be. There did, there seems to be some correlation between the size and, and, uh, of the establishment and probably the number of expenses they have. I'm not sure that, that a very small restaurant with a only, you know, maybe. Just the owners working behind the counter, um, should be getting, you know, the same five thousand dollars that somebody. With, you know, a, a lot of expenses and a lot more of everything else is, is getting, so we think that's kind of a fair way to distribute it.
Are we applying the same criteria that we had for the first time around? What was it, you know, like working with the landlord and? And all that? And are we doing mortgages or just rent? I mean, I, I forgot, whatever, whatever the criteria was last time.
We did open up the second round to mortgages and I would suggest that we do mortgages. We also have a system that if somebody owned their building. And they're not paying a mortgage, it's generally we pay them per, uh, an agreed upon per square foot. Based on the average rent that we have, which is like, um, I, I don't have that number right in front of me, but. There is a dollar amount per square foot, so it works out comparable to if they had a mortgage or a rent payment. Um, probably the difference I would suggest, if we go over some of the, um. So we want to use, we'd use a max of five thousand dollars. That's what we would recommend if you're agreeable to that. Um, we would also go directly and work through the, uh. With the landlord, if they have a landlord, so that we know that money is going in towards their rent. Uh, the one thing we probably wouldn't want to mandate. Uh, obviously, last time we mandated that we wanted them applying for PP, uh, the PPP loans, right? Or PP, what are they, PPA or whatever they were called?
PP.
Well, there, you know, this is a bridge, and we expect that there'll be some funds hopefully available from the state. Um, but we don't know what those are yet, so I wouldn't recommend mandating, uh, that they have to do that because we don't know what's out there yet. Um. We also were make, mandating that the landlord had to, um, forgive some of the rent. You know, and that was early on in this. I'm not sure if you want to be making those same demands, you know, eight or nine months into. COVID, who knows how much the landlord may have forgiven the first score round and. Um, but that's up to you, I guess, if you want to put any of those demands on the landlord in order for this. When, when we did have holdups last time, it was, uh, some of it was trying to work through some of those issues with landlords. It's, you know, our goal is to try to get money out and to, uh, to help these businesses as quickly as possible.
Uh, when they. Eric, how much, how much money do we have? Um, have we earmarked for this?
So based on the conversation last time, you said, set a million dollars aside and that was gonna be. Uh, half for rent relief for employee and half for business.
Okay.
And, and, and then there was another hundred thousand that we earmarked for childcare. Now that is not set in stone yet because, uh, there may be, uh, you know, we don't know exactly what that plan looks like, so it could be a little more, it could be a little less, we'll see. Um, Kelly will probably tell me it won't be less, but.
It won't be less.
Wasn't there rent and food for employees?
Uh, food is a different issue that Shannon will discuss because there's some, there's some dollars that FERC can access. Uh, for food, uh, so Shannon will, Shannon will make, well, it was in the recommendation that she sent you all an email, I think. They want.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, they want the freedom to be able to potentially do food with some of it if they need be, but they think they have. Access to some other dollars for food, so, um. Access to some other dollars for food, so, um, yeah.
And what did we do, and I'm sorry, I don't remember, what, what did we do last time for, for businesses, was that? Did we allocate five hundred or a million for businesses last time?
Where's, where's Cory, Cory, open up there. I thought we did.
I think it was a million for businesses and then five hundred thousand for rent relief.
Yeah, cuz it was one point five, so that makes sense.
That was all businesses, yeah, all smaller businesses, and it took us two rounds to get that out there, so.
Are we gonna be, are we, are we talking about this separately, like in other words? Businesses and then employees, or, or is it okay if I offer, uh, ask some questions about the employee system, rent relief?
If you need to, does, do you need that to help you make a decision on businesses or?
No, no.
Get the businesses decided.
I guess my only question that ties into, um, rent relief for employees, it was the ratio, so last time it was. Two-thirds to businesses, one-thirds to workforce in rental relief, right?
Yes. That's how those numbers work.
Yeah, it was, and I don't think we knew last time, it was the first time of doing it when we were doing every industry. Uh, or most of the people that, at least that, with the exception of those that were able to work remotely. Um, you know, we didn't know what that would be, and I can tell you that the last time. When we did, uh, in the last round, not all restaurants were eligible, because your larger ones that had more employees weren't eligible. But we had, how many, sixty? Seven?
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine restaurants.
Fifty-nine restaurants applied this spring in our, for assistance, so. Really only about half of our restaurants took advantage of that, uh, in the spring.
And this is the same scenario, right, where they'll, they'll apply?
Yeah, they have to apply, yep. Yeah, we're not just people checks that they can go do whatever with, right, we wanna, I mean, I think it's. It was proven and it worked well last time to actually do a rent relief and made sure where the money went, so.
I agree.
Rick, I'm, I'm good with restaurants and bars, five thousand rents max and no restrictions on landlords. I, I like the way you stated, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in, I'm in with this as well, I, I think. What, I don't know, you guys could, some of you guys can remember, there was a time when we had a little, little, many less restaurants up in Main Street. And it was all real estate offices and T-shirt shops, and I just think restaurants, the mix of businesses. Add to the vitality of our community, so I wanna keep these guys afloat through this next six months, hopefully no more than six months. Not that we're gonna do this for six months, but just, yeah.
Well, Jeffrey, that's like the perfect segue to my question, um, I absolutely support this. I absolutely want to support restaurants on, uh, you know, within our town, my concern is a little bit more. Um, looking at so, how our numbers have been the last three weeks, um, I mean, obviously the last two months, but also. As we've sort of tried to, uh, put these different mitigation measures in place to reduce our numbers. And we haven't been having a lot of success with that, I guess I'm just, I would like to know. That we're not just spending all our, the money, when, this isn't like all the money we can afford to do a stimulus package. Because if we are looking at a, a rough three months. Um, you know, I'd like to know the total amount we could give out every month, maybe we won't need to do that, that'd be wonderful. Of course, but I'm just concerned that if we give a million out right now and then next month retail gets shut down and we say, oh. Sorry, we already gave all our money out, I just, I would really like to have, um. You know, and I know that a million dollars isn't all we have to give out, and so if we need, I think we should do this immediately and get this into. The restaurant's hands, because they've already been shut down now, mostly shut down for almost a week or. I guess four or five days, but my point is. Um, I'm a little bit concerned that we need to look at the bigger picture for like a three, three or six month plan. How much money can we afford to be giving out, because unfortunately, I think we might be going into that. I would love to be wrong, I hope we're, I'm wrong.
I'm not sure you need to answer that question right now, because you can, I mean. It, it's just, that's such a loaded question, how much can we afford to do, well, you could sit here today and say. Well, let's do two million dollars and can, can I go pull two million out of, out of your reserve, but that just means that that might be. You know, one less capital project that's gonna get done, uh, in twenty-two or something like that, and so, it, there, you know, it's. There's just, you have some extra money, um, but I also think if I was you. There's two schools of thought, if you spend up to five thousand dollars per business right now, there's a good chance that you may use the majority of that five hundred. That you've earmarked, you could do like you did last year and say up to four thousand, and you could have a little money set aside. In case you need some down the road. The special legislative shi- uh, session is gonna convene on the thirtieth, from what we understand. I think we're gonna hear pretty quickly, what if anything's gonna come out of the state? And we'll get an idea of what other money might be out there that we can access, or at least businesses could go for some help. And that could help then in your decision-making, uh, down the road, so. You know, you don't know, and the, this, these targets are moving so much, uh, week to week. That I think you should deal with what we know right now, based on the decisions you made, and if we have to regroup. In three weeks, because something is going further or getting prolonged, so be it, we'll discuss it, we'll see what our comfort level is. So.
Yeah, so I guess I'm saying I do agree with the five thousand limit, I agree with the application, and I agree with going to the restaurants. And I'm, and it doesn't have to be tied to a landlord forgiveness, hopefully at this point landlords realize that they want to keep whoever's in there. In there and will work, continue to work with them, but my, my sort of, um, interest would be that the next time we talk about this. Or in a couple of weeks, it'd be nice if it was a little bit more of a. Long-term look at the budget.
I agree with you, Kelly, just, um, long-term, if we're gonna have to do this again, what's possible, and then looking ahead, fairness. Across industries, if other industries are impacted, um, I think initially just talking to some restaurant owners, like. Any little bit helps, and I'd love to help them now, talking to some small businesses, I was so surprised like how much. They're in shifting to takeout and investing well over a thousand for takeout, um, so I am very supportive of giving. Restaurants this relief right now, um, I wanna make sure we have enough left over. Um, which it sounds like we're earmarking right now, half a million for the workforce, really take care of them, um, but yeah, initially, um. I'm just wondering if we wanna be consistent with the last round of relief and stick to four thousand as the cap, just to have maybe a little bit. More relief funds if, as things evolve with Covid.
Yeah, I was, I was actually thinking, um, something along those lines too, a- as, you know, when we met last time. It was two thousand, or it sounded like that was a ballpark was two thousand and now it's up to five thousand, um. And, and thinking about what Kel, you know, Kelly raises a good point about what's, what's the long-term here and. You know, we, we could go back, you know, maybe we take a look with four thousand, limited at four thousand like we did last time. And then reevaluate after that, I think that, I think that makes sense, um. To see, to see where we are, because I, I'd much rather be slow and steady, I mean, provide the support, of course. You know, I, I understand restaurants are being hit really hard, but maybe knock it back just a little bit. So that we have more, so that we can be, you know, more fair in the future, I just would hate to bite off more than we can chew now. Knowing that retail could be shut down, that other, that we could have a full shutdown in our future. And then, you know, retail might come back to us and say, but you gave out five thousand before, why aren't you doing that now, so?
But retail, but restaurant rent is really high, like it's, retail does not even begin to compare with restaurant rent. They're like fifteen thousand dollars, a lot of those place, spaces.
Sure, but if, if we're getting into two months next, I mean, like the point that you raised, like, I, I just, I don't know what the future would hold, I just. I'm not seeing why we're going higher than we did last time, if that was, if that was successful.
But it's still within the budgeted amount, right?
Within the five hundred, what do you mean, within the budget amount?
Well, when we talked last time, we had said that we were going to do like a million dollars worth of relief, right, Rick? Wasn't that what we said on last Tuesday, and we're still within, we're still within that. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, she would be, but you don't, yeah, I think going four thousand allows you to, to save a little bit for future relief. So.
Well, how do you, how's everyone feel about four, between four and five, what are you guys thinking? Kelly, you at five?
I'm five.
The problem made for saving it for later is they need it now. And we've got the money, um, I'm hoping the state is definitely gonna come in and help us on the tail end of this.
It looks like discussions in the state are just gonna be, what's coming out of the capital, it just, um. Sales tax relief, letting businesses keep sales tax, I don't think, um, the state's gonna be distributing.
And I'm not even sure, is it keeping sales tax, Carol, or?
Keeping is whatever.
Okay, I also heard not charging it, which only helps the buyer, but they said it makes the dollar go farther, but.
No, I think what I've read is letting, uh, businesses keep their sales tax.
The two percent, or the states, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so my reasoning might sound like I'm talking out both sides of my mouth, but I think we have this amount of money right now. But what I don't, but I also wanna plan for the future, I don't wanna just keep like parsing out, you know, a million here, a million there. I wanna kind of understand the bigger picture, so I support the greater amount now, because I think that's a realistic impact to the restaurants. Yeah, um, and I mean, four thousand is obviously a realistic impact too, but I do, I think that that amount of money is appropriate. You know, within the one million that we already, um, had thought we'd be spending at this time, but. Just knowing that if this goes on for months and months, then we really have to have a bigger program and not just be rolling out a million dollars every month or. You know, one-five and letting it creep up.
Rick, can you talk about, um, just like the logic or reasoning behind, um, suggesting a max of five thousand? This go-around versus four thousand, like last time?
Uh, only because I thought we have a, we have a better idea of the number that we're working with, and so I was trying to. Maximize, uh, getting you closest to spending the half million. So.
I, I can, I'm, I'm, I can be good with.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that it, one way or the, I don't know that you're gonna save that much going to Ford, so I'm not sure we should spend. Um, you know, it's just, it, you're right, the, the expenses on a restaurant are the most expensive out there. Uh, they have a lot of square footage, and you see rents going up as high as twenty-one thousand, that's a lot, uh, we don't see that in retail very often, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just happy to be able to support, to support the restaurants, I do, I do worry. About setting a precedent, what it's gonna look like in the future and all that, but we can, we can worry about that next month, it's fine.
Uh, and I do wanna be, you know, uh, Kathy Christine has been working with the restaurant group out there, and they've really been organizing. And I think we've seen more collaboration with them.
Retail is.
I'm sorry, retail, retail, more with them and than we've seen in the past, and, you know, she did a, a survey with them. And they all want to see some business relief, they feel that they need it also, um, they feel like. The vibrancy of Main Street will be impacted, which will impact their businesses, uh, when restaurants are unopened, but I just. I don't feel that the numbers support that right now, uh, but I don't, I just wanted you to be. Uh, aware of that, so.
Yeah, I think the important thing to think about there is that, you know, if next month we do see that it has impacted Main Street, then. Um, we should certainly be considering that, I think, just up to this point, you know, we had Walkable Maine, and we actually had sort of. Really cultivated that whole situation, so, um, I feel like, you know. Unfortunately, we don't probably have the money to be forecasting that we think it's gonna be an issue for this coming month. And we'll have to probably do something after we know it's an issue.
So where are we at on how many people wanted four or five, so we can put this thing. We got five, 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 looks like, okay, we'll just go, we'll go with five, uh. You know, our recommendation will be per business, not per owner, cuz we do have some owners that have multiple businesses. But I think each business is separate, um. Cory, any other questions relative to restaurants, I don't think.
So, one question that I had is if we're limiting the size of the restaurant this time around, last go-around, it was thirty-five, or is it open to everybody?
My understanding is open to everybody.
Everybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and Leslie's still on here, so if we look, here's what we'll do, and, and, uh, so Leslie, listen up. If we, if we end up with another discussion relative to a need for more, uh. A business relief in the future, maybe the best way to do that would be to bring back to the council our, uh. Fund balance numbers, that, that one chart that shows our different fund balances, because that's typically, uh, where. The money we have to work with in there, and we can, we can make some very quick adjustments. Based on if we see additional, you know, revenue losses here, or whatever, with the trending that we're seeing, we can make some. Quick adjustments, which will impact and, and change those fund balance numbers, but still give you an idea. Uh, we can also have an idea through Shannon, what, because remember, one of the reasons those fund balances moved up. Is because we moved property off of that three-year window on capital. But that doesn't mean the capital projects aren't still out there, just they're lingering out and beyond that four-year, you know, window right now. But we can also get a number on what those are, and so that's, that would give us then a comfort level to say if. If you feel good at one point five, if we had to do it, pull another one-five out or something like that, okay? You think, Kelly, that would help with where you were going?
Yeah, I do think that, thank you very much.
Alright, uh, so let's bring, I think we can bring Eric and Dick back for the employee discussion. Because they're not, that doesn't hit them directly, is everybody good with that? Uh, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Eric, Dick, can you hear me? Alright.
Alright.
Alright, so, uh, thanks for that decision, we will start rolling out and doing something probably. Uh, well, they'll maybe start working on it tomorrow, but for sure, the first part of the week, because a town hall is closed down, uh. Thursday and Friday, cuz of Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving has always been a town holiday, so. Yeah, for town employees. Not that they can go anywhere. Alright.
Or be with anyone.
Or be with anyone, so they might as well work. Anyways, Shannon?
Anyway, on that note, um, so on the worker relief side of things. We've had several conversations with the FERC on a community-wide basis, um, talking about what. Worked right and what didn't work so well in the spring, um, and what we've come up with is a recommendation. That we provide up to eight hundred and fifty dollars per person per month. Um, for rental relief with the option of a second month of assistance, if the person qualifies and if we have money left. Um, in the spring, um, I don't believe we had, we probably had an amount. Um, in the spring, um, I don't believe we had, we probably had an amount. Um, and I apologize, I don't remember what that was, but what, uh, Brian had said is. Eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred dollars was about the average amount, um. And so she and her folks there feel really comfortable that this is. Going to be very helpful to workers at this, at this dollar amount. Um, it would, as Rick said earlier, be open unless you tell us otherwise, to workers who can verify that they've lost their job. Or they've had their income reduced due to COVID. Um, it would go directly to the landlord as it did in the spring. And, uh, one of the things, and I, I'm sure you all remember, that happened in the spring was there was a delay. In processing applications, and that was, it was for a really good reason, because FERC, um, as you know, provides. So much service and they were doing a really true wraparound service for folks, so. Helping them with their unemployment, helping them with healthcare benefits, with food, with all of that, um. But Brian feels like now a, a lot of our folks are very educated on that, and so there's probably not the same. Need to provide all of that service, um. But what they would do is once an application was submitted, um, not only for the worker applicant, but also for the landlord. They would send out, uh, information with. You know, five ways that people can be financially sustainable here in Summit County, and then would offer. Help to folks if they needed it, so instead of making it part of the application process, it would be as an, on an add, as needed basis. Um, and they feel that that change could really help. Processing applications much quicker this time around than, than the last time. Uh, when it comes to food. Yeah.
No, go ahead. I'll ask after. When it comes to food.
Um, when it, when it comes to the food side of things, they said they've had. They now have access to funds that they've never had access to before and may never have access to again. And so they're applying for every bit of federal and state funding that they can get for food assistance. Um, they think they're gonna be able to meet people's needs with that funding, with those grants. Um, what they're trying to figure out now is more on the staffing side of things, and so it's very likely that they'll go to some. Kind of a hybrid model of actual food distribution and, uh, grocery store gift card type, um. Distribution as well, so, but they just like. To have the opportunity that if they do need, um, some funding for food. Assistance that they could use some of that, um, some of the money from the town for that purpose. Um, and then the last piece that I think is important, we did provide. Uh, a percentage of the funds in the spring for administration, um, and so similar to what we did in the spring. FERC is asking to be able to reserve ten percent of the town funding. For their operating costs and to assist with hiring two coordinators to administer the program. Um, and just a note, when they did this in the spring, because they offered all of those wraparound services, they had seventeen coordinators. So I, Corey and I both had the opportunity to kind of sit through a, um. Flow chart demonstration of what this process would look like, it, as opposed to what it looked like in the spring. It's pretty slick. I think they've got it really dialed in. Um, and I think the, the workers who are applying will be really happy with, with how it flows. Um, what they need to do versus what they needed to do in the spring and what they get for relief. And I'm happy to answer your questions.
Is, is, um, Father Dyer's Food Bank, is that still operating pretty regularly?
And they are, um, even prior to going to Level Red between. Um, FERC, Father Dyer, and Health and Human Services, they were, um, seeing, you know. Probably close to six hundred. Um, families per week needing food assistance, so there certainly is a really strong need for that in the community and they expect that to go up.
And, and one more question, uh, in the springtime, we, I don't know if we, I don't know if we required, but we asked. Uh, landlords to, um, uh, work with us to lower, you know, to meet their tenants in the middle, to lower the rent a little bit. Uh, before they could get, uh, if they're gonna get subsidies, is, or if their renter is gonna get subsidies. Are we doing that again?
We didn't ask, or we asked him not to evict him.
Okay, that's what we had, okay.
I would, we're gonna do the same thing, right?
Yeah, I think we would do the same on the eviction piece, but we weren't asking for a lower rent.
Shannon, not, not to get into too much detail, but I think it's an important piece. Um, I had a employee inquire with FERC. And, um, she was told that, um, you know, it's a minimum, you have to have lived here six months. And I guess that maybe on the surface sounds good, but, you know, this employee moved here in September, signed a year's lease. Um, I am, you know, we invested in training her, she invested in her training. And she's a very valued member of our community now, in my opinion, and, um. And she's committed to be here for a year, so by signing the lease, so I, uh. I guess I would make an argument that maybe having a year's lease is more important than six months tenure.
Yeah, with the worker shortage right now.
Um, yeah, and I, I don't recall in our conversation that we, with FERC, that, um, that they had said. Or were recommending that our funding be tied to an amount of time in the county, although. We did have, we did have, um, a more general conversation. About that, um, because what FERC saw in the spring, um, is that a lot of folks took assistance and they're no longer here. Um, so that's, I think, where that came from, um, but I also feel if council, whether you want to have no requirement. For that at all, if you wanna tie it to, you know, having a year's lease, uh, we, you know, I think. We can probably do that. I know FERC would like to keep this as kind of similar across all the jurisdictions as possible to make sure the process runs smoothly. Um, but I'll bring, uh, you know, obviously bring back whatever you would like.
Maybe it's one or the other, either six months in the county or a one-year lease, you know, that's been signed. One or the other demonstrates a level of, of, uh, commitment, I think.
Yeah, I don't think anyone was moving here in March or April. Uh, or very few people moving here in March and April to work the tourist season, you know, the work in, in the service industry, so many unknowns, so. I would agree with, with Dick, uh, uh, six months or years lease.
Shannon, did you have any feedback from the FERC on, um. The requirement of having a signed lease? Some people go month to month, some people maybe don't have formalized leases. Did that, did they have any feedback if that requirement left people out?
We did not have that conversation.
Hey Shannon, I, um, I have a tenant that asked me to fill out paperwork for FERC. Last week, and I got notified on Friday that she's been accepted, so I think I should recuse myself from, uh, from this discussion. What was that, Rick?
That's probably, that could be a different pot of money, cuz they're still doing, uh, some other rent relief, right, Shannon?
They are, and I think they're trying to focus their rent relief on, you know, kind of at-risk folks, um. So I don't know if you all approved this tonight, if they would, where they would try to pay that out of, but if it's already been approved, I. I would assume it's out of FERC money.
The county is getting ready to do some countywide rent relief also, but it probably would be, and they are looking to combine, and they've asked if the towns are. Uh, you know, uh, want to combine, and we were, I said, there's value in combining if, if we can get. Some additional dollars, like some federal or state dollars. Uh, countywide, then yes, we would combine, but for the purposes of this. We want this to be geared again at people that work in Breckenridge. So, uh, I think last time it didn't matter where they live, but, uh. Right, it just, they had to work in Breck.
Right. Everybody good with that piece?
Yeah.
Okay. Is everybody good with this? Going forward?
Yes.
I, I think it's a great plan, and thank you, everyone who was involved in, in working on it. It was, I think it's really well thought out.
Kelly? Dennis? I know Jeffrey's thumbs up. Okay.
It's just, uh. I'm sorry, Jeffrey?
No, go ahead. You, you have seniority.
I was just gonna say, I will work with FERC on that timeframe piece, um, and to Carol's point. If, if FERC feels like that is a barrier for folks who maybe don't have a lease or month to month or whatever. I will work through that, um, and if this is gonna be a challenge, I'll let you all know.
Thanks, Shannon.
And you know, for the, for the people that like Dick was talking about, who just, who moved here to work this key season or whatnot. Just so you know, this, this is an anomaly. Generally, uh, in the, in the service industry, it's a pretty reliable gig here in the winter and. Get through this winter and, oh, actually, this, this fall, late fall and early winter. And hopefully things will get better. I mean, all of us will, will waiters, most of us will waiters and waitresses at one time. I was the best in the town, Dick was number four.
He still is.
Yeah.
Okay, what's next, Rick?
Um. Well, I, I don't have anything I know specific, other than I wanna allow you some time. I think we.
Oh, wait, what about childcare?
Well, I, I don't know that we're ready, are we? Are you ready to make a recommendation?
Oh.
If I'm missing something, I apologize, but I didn't know we had the specifics yet of the program. I thought we were waiting to hear something from somebody.
Hey Kelly, well, I have a question on childcare for Kelly. Are the teachers, when, when a cohort or a classroom in childcare gets quarantined, are the teachers being paid?
Yeah, so that's exactly what we, what Corey and Lori and I met to discuss was. Um, how we can ensure that we're still paying teachers who get quarantined because of exposure at work. And, um, how we can help families. Who experience like a loss of, um, income, either due to, you know, reduced hours at their job. Or because their child is quarantined week after week after week. And, um, so what we thought would be appropriate is, um, to. Do about a hundred thousand dollars into the invest in teachers money. And what that would do, that would bring it, um. That hundred thousand dollars would be split between the four centers. And, you know, based on how many teachers they have, and that would give, allow them to give two more weeks. Um, which is only one quarantine period of that paid leave, and I think that's just. I mean, this is imperative. We can't have teachers who come to work, are exposed, have to go home and quarantine for two weeks. And not be paying them for that time. I mean, they will not come back to work and we have a pretty difficult time keeping. Teachers employed.
Kelly, um, does a hundred grand cover that?
Well, that's a great question. I mean, no, it doesn't, because we're, we're seeing quarantines, you know, um. One of our centers is closed completely for two weeks right now, another one of the centers, all of the centers have. Experienced closures and/or classroom closures, um. So it would, they also got some money from Summit Foundation to do this, and then there are. Um, FMLA money, there's a few different pots of money, so. What that would do is that would continue to help them fund that pot of money. It, I'm not saying they're not gonna come, come back and say, we need to do this again, you know, in January or February, but. It would continue to keep those pots full so that they could, um, they would ensure that they paid the teachers.
Hey Kelly, two questions. One, do, do parents get a refund when their kids are quarantined?
No, so, um, we haven't, you know, in, all the facilities are trying to run the budget the same way. Um, in March, when the, the entire facility was closed, they didn't charge for some period of that. Um, and then. Since that time, um, they haven't had any, any closure that's been more than two weeks. And across the board, all the facilities have decided that they would continue to charge. During those two-week closures, because otherwise it was just. I mean, there was just no way to guarantee that the facility would even be able to, you know, continue to operate if every two weeks they were refunding a bunch of money. We do want to support our families and we do know, um. That it's a serious hardship, um, there's no doubt about that, but the problem is, is that, um. Some families have not experienced as much of a reduction in pay. As other families, and so that's why we wanted to target that money for people, so we wanted to target another fifty thousand into a fund. That Corey could administer to families who experienced the loss in, um. In income. We know that it's very difficult for anyone to work while they have kids at home. But there is still a different, you know, we're still paying our teachers to stay, and so in order to make. Um, all the payments work, that's the way we've decided to do it so far. And the boards, you know, each of these facilities is a separate entity, and so the boards have, have all voted on those. Um, decisions.
Dick?
Well, it's Kelly, um, I believe there's federal money to pay those teachers while they are being quarantined, and it's through the family, through the, you know. Not the, not the, uh. Um.
It's a different.
You know, it's.
Yeah, there's another, there's another one, but I believe it's capped at eighty, each of those, I believe, is capped at eighty hours.
Maybe, actually, so if, if the different, um. Centers are having trouble navigating through that, maybe we spend a little bit of the money to provide. Some HR consulting to help them, um, better navigate.
They're pretty versed.
So they get, okay, good.
I know that Timberline and Little Red have both, um, tapped into the FMLA, and it's something like AAL, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it, yeah, it, it's similar to the FMLA, but it's, it's, it's COVID-driven. The, the second piece I have is that, you know, that, this is impacting our families just like rent, you know, it, it, um. Childcare is, is often as expensive as housing, um, costs, so for families with multiple kids. So, you know, I think this is super important. You know, as we are offering support to, to our, our workforce for rent. I, I think offering for the impacted workforce, um, to help them with some, some childcare, I think is really important, so I'm, I'm. Fully supportive of the hundred thousand, probably, Kelly, you and Corey need to get together and, and bring it back to us, a little more specific plan. But when you do that, I know I'm supportive of, of, of supporting in that amount.
Okay, Rick, I think that, I think the thing we were waiting on was the nicotine money. I thought you were gonna go and figure out what we could take out of that.
Well, there's some stuff I could pay with nicotine dollars, it's just a matter of what, um. Yeah, it just, that just saves some money for you. I mean, I can pay FERC for nicotine dollars.
You what?
I could pay FERC with nicotine dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
One thing I was just gonna mention is that, you know, we looked at, could, um. The town help, if a facility is closed for an entire month, could the town help make that payment, and. You know, their payrolls are on the order of eighty thousand dollars a month, and so it's just too much, I mean. That's three hundred thousand dollars, a little bit more than that, you know, so. We're, um, we're hoping, like we said, to affect, to help the families who have been economically impacted. Even though everybody's been impacted in a lot of ways.
So. How's everybody else about this? Is everybody else good with a hundred, a hundred grand, or, or are you saying? I mean, I don't.
So what I'm asking for right now is a hundred and fifty thousand, but, um, we do know that there are. Potentially some state funds that are gonna become available, and they're not gonna be huge, huge. And they're not gonna be huge, huge dollar figures, but they are gonna, you know, be meaningful to our small facilities. So it's been suggested in some financial discussions with Elizabeth Lawrence and others that we might allot maybe half of this right now, and then see what they get in the special, special session, which is supposed to start on November thirtieth. And, but then, you know, in our minds to know that we would need probably the other half as well after that time.
Hey, what's the deal with the, do we have any access to that 1A money?
Uh, not, probably not for this. I think it's earmarked for certain purposes, right?
Yeah, so the 1A money they are using to pay, I think some, they do want to use it for some COVID relief, but I haven't heard how they're going to do that yet.
I mean, I, I mean, initially, it was thinking about building centers or whatever. It just seems right now, it's a whole new ballgame. And it, it would make some sense if some of that 1A money was allocated to the, the various centers that are open currently, many of them in Breck.
Yeah, definitely. And the, the capital money is already earmarked. The capital money is already earmarked for a new facility, but there are other monies that they are working to free up for COVID relief.
Yeah, but I mean, what does earmark mean? I mean, earmark means it's, it's put aside for that. But that, it was put aside before this whole COVID thing went down. So wouldn't it be appropriate just to ask the question, well, maybe the need right now is more immediate opposed to in the future as far as a, a facility? Anyone?
Do you want me to carry that question?
No, but I wondered if, if, yeah, who would, who would be the appropriate person to ask that question to? And who would be the appropriate person?
Commissioners, probably.
Exactly. So would Rick do that? Or Shannon, because they're afraid of her?
I don't have a problem asking them. I think that's, I'm, I'm not sure that everybody would agree that you wanna, that you forego a long-term crisis to deal with a short-term crisis right now because of our lack of beds in the county.
And honestly, I think the better question is, we know there, there is other money in that 1A funding for childcare that is available, free and available. So where is it going? And when is it, you know? If there's extra money, when can it be distributed? I don't even think that the capital plan necessarily needs to change. There, the 1A, there is other 1A money for childcare that should be, because they have an excess of summit pre-K funds.
Kelly, let me ask you, how sensitive is, from a time standpoint, is this right now? Is it more about getting a process laid out so that it's there? Because what I'd like, Eric and I have a mayor managers meeting next week, and we could actually raise the issue on some 1A dollars relative to, you know, childcare, some childcare assistance. Because if we're feeling this in Breck, I would assume the others are feeling the same issues going on out there. I'd rather almost have a process where people, we have a pot of money and people make application when they know they've reached their threshold on, through FML dollars in the COVID hours. And then this is a backup to them. Instead of giving somebody money and having them manage it, we use it as a bank to help support when they make application based on their need. So maybe we have a little bit of time to kind of internally discuss the process a little bit and get some other questions. I, I think real, and plus, we're not gonna set aside the whole amount anyways. I mean, if we, if, if everybody felt good right now that we're gonna earmark fifty grand to kind of set up this process to help backfill what's not being covered through, you know, state or federal benefits that they currently are allotted. And, and then, you know, how we also deal with a full, if we have a shutdown and people want reimbursement or something on their, their money. We could come up with that process. Know we have some money. If we had an immediate need to get it out there, and then we could come back with some, maybe some other thoughts on this.
I think that's fine, because I do know that all the facilities have some money left to continue paying staff when they're out on quarantine. I do think that I, besides the fifty grand for that pot, I'd really like to put twenty-five grand away, right away for Cory to distribute to families. And I know that there is a hardship right now with, you know, people not able to work because their kids are now virtual, or or they just have less hours because we're in red and, you know, their restaurant or whatever isn't open, isn't functioning.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Everybody else?
Yeah, yeah, without a doubt, yeah.
All right, so we'll set seventy-five total, plus twenty-five for, what do we call that one, Kelly? Family?
Family assistance.
Sure. I mean, we usually call it, it's part of the tuition assistance program, but some people might qualify just because of their loss of income.
Let's just call it COVID tuition assistance then, so we can separate.
And you want to move this extra seventy-five into the childcare fund out of our, out of excise or something? Or do you want to just go and spend it out of childcare?
No, I want to move it from someplace because the childcare.
How about the?
You're just giving me a hard time. I'm not gonna.
I was asking everybody except.
Move it from excise.
Move it out of the golf fund.
Well, let's take it out of the sledding fund.
All right, we got fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
So, so we know from Public Works that by midday tomorrow, we, we think we could have a good signing package out there, similar to what we did on Main Street, to help educate people. So if you want us to give that a shot and see what happens.
How's everybody feel about that?
That.
Good?
Yeah.
Sam, okay. I want to, I want to, we need to just talk about lodging. I don't, I'm not really looking for much, but you know, we have sort of talked around the issue of not doing a restriction on, on lodging just in Breck because our town touches too much county. And if county's not gonna have a restriction, should we? Aaron did bring up a great idea, though, with, you know, not, not allowing people to fill rooms that are getting canceled. On the other hand, it's sort of the same conundrum. If you back up to county property, it doesn't really matter, because the county property's still feeding town and feeding the, you know, Main Street and the ski area, et cetera, et cetera. So how, how's everybody feeling? You know, I mean, that's the one thing we've been getting in a lot of these emails is, you guys close restaurants, why don't you close lodging, even though it wasn't us? That's been some of the blowback, so.
Eric, it didn't sound like the county had an appetite for limiting lodging or shutting down lodging. Do you think the county would be open to this idea?
No, because I had mentioned it to Elizabeth also. They're like, like Elizabeth said in her text to me, and it is just a text, but their worry is just displacing more workers, housekeepers, front desk people. And I, I mean, on it, that's a legitimate concern. Those are locals too, who would be out of work if, you know, if you shut down some of the lodging properties.
So can I just add a couple of things? The thing about, the, the thing about the moratorium would be that maybe for the next, you know, two or three weeks, if a lodging property did experience cancellations, then the lodging property couldn't turn around and put it on a great sale, right? Like, put it at fifty percent. And then the conundrum for, for people who might be coming up would be, or the, I'm sorry, the, what, what people would be thinking through is, wow, this is really cheap lodging in Breckenridge. And they'd be weighing health versus, you know, a cheap room. And my concern is that the, the people who would be after the cheap room and not weighing their health wouldn't be people who were, you know, holding the same values of COVID as, as we've been doing. And so this wouldn't be putting, you know, this wouldn't be putting people out of work. Nobody would be calling up people cancelling reservations. It would just be avoiding that fire sale of, of rooms just to fill rooms. And it could also keep, so I know we've heard, you know, people or lodging properties reporting back saying that, you know, twenty percent of their reservations have been, have been canceled. So it would just be keeping that twenty percent of those cancellations. It wouldn't be, you know, telling no to lodging. It would just be saying, okay, well, we'll just keep the cutback that's already happening naturally right now. And so that's my thought behind it, is that, you know, people wouldn't be going, you know, people wouldn't be laid off or furloughed. It would just be avoiding that, those cheap rooms, or, or not cheap rooms, but those discounted rooms to still get people up here. And hopefully, that would be just preserving these, this cutback of people, so that hopefully, we're not seeing those crowds as well. And, and I think Eric sent out, you know, a prime example from Vail Resorts of trying to get people to still come up to Breckenridge due to discounted rooms.
Yeah.
Is it enforce, is it enforceable? How would we enforce it?
And is it, did the county give any sort of public health reason that they didn't have an appetite for this? Like, did they say, we don't think this will have a meaningful impact on our COVID rates, and that's why we're not gonna do it? Or did they say, like, this is, did they give any reason?
That was just a text to me from Elizabeth during a meeting, once they come to a decision, because I told her we were gonna talk about it tonight, and as soon as she knew. So it was not completely fleshed out. It was just strictly just a heads up. So I don't, I'm not sure the, the depth of their discussion. But the, the question does stand from Jeffrey, though. Is this something we could enforce, Rick?
I'd have concerns about it. I mean, I guess we could do it. You're talking about somebody not being able to fill for a three-week period if, if, you know, let's say, whatever that designated, but let's say three weeks. If a reservation is canceled, you are not allowed to fill that reservation during that, from this date to that date. Could we do it through a town manager order? Because you're not gonna get, you'd have to do an emergency ordinance immediately if we did it by ordinance. And I don't even know exactly what that would look like and what, where that would fall, but you know, you can do it and hope people comply. We'd really have, it'd be difficult. It'd be difficult to know if somebody wasn't complying, other than if they're advertising. And, but then you, even like Vale could say, well, these rooms were never filled to begin with.
Right.
You know?
Well, and it would be a moratorium on new reservations, right? That's essentially, it wouldn't, right?
I mean, not the ones that were canceled, but any new reservations.
Any new reservations. And, and, I mean, another option, if we do support this, because I do agree with the county, you know, with what Eric is saying about, you know, united front, that sort of thing, not sing, um, singling out Breckenridge. We could also message the commissioners to say that this is something we want to do, if that's, if that's the will of the council.
Thoughts?
I mean, I just, I know that I already said this during this meeting, but I really want to know what Amy Wineland or public health thinks, how we're gonna meaningfully get our COVID numbers down in the next three weeks, so that we can save our season. I mean, is there any way to? I mean, I guess, you know, absence, absent of having that, then I, I would probably follow what the commissioners are suggesting, because they have that. They actually have a public health person who's telling them what they should do that's in the interest of public health.
Yeah, they're always like this.
So.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, Kelly. I, boy, do I ever go back and forth. This, this is a tough one. My, I have another concern, because Aaron, that's a really, you know, very intriguing idea. My, an additional concern would be, are we gonna see lodging all of a sudden stop giving refunds because of this? You know, there's many businesses being impacted. And, you know, are you gonna have some lodging folks that are, you know, which really gives us a black eye? If, you know, somebody's not giving a refund during these times, that's, that's, that's not cool. So I, I guess I struggle with it some.
I would have a really hard time saying yes without the county, but to Kelly's point, we really need to establish where we're gonna be in three weeks. And I'm just not sure how to go about that.
So if, if we were to do this thing, if we were, we're talking about like, no new reservations, it would be, be starting like the December first and going for, till December thirteenth or something like that. Is that what we're talking about? And if that is the case, how long would it take? I mean, could we even implement that in time? How many, what percentage of the, of the lodging people would comply? I mean, obviously, the Beaver Runswood and the villages and, you know, the BGVs or whatever, but would, would mom, pop, Airbnbs, VIBOs know about it and even be able to comply? Or, or be willing to comply?
Well, every, we have a way of communicating with every license holder in town. Now, whether they read the communication, I can't vouch for it, but you know, we have the ability to send communication on rule changes almost immediately to every license holder. But Yeah.
And it's, it's, believe me, it's not something I want to fall on my sword for or anything like that. I just, I thought it was an idea. You know, a lot of conversations have been thrown around about how to reduce short-term rental. And so it would be a night, a way to do that without, you know, putting people out of work. I, and again, I stress, this would be better if it were a county idea. And I also think it would be better if it happened sooner than later, because I think we'll continue to see sales on lodging. And I feel like people will buy.
I, you know, I really like the idea personally. I thought it was a great idea, but I think it's a better idea at a countywide level. I, I think us doing it on our own has challenges. So, you know, and I don't think we get the backing of public health when we do these things, like the county does as part of a public health order. And that just makes concerns for me. But.
Well, we can reach out to the county and talk to them about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all want to get some more, you know, there's, obviously, there was more dialogue than what we shared in a text message. And and there's either, I mean, Scott could tell me quickly, there's just no appetite to do anything right now.
But could we? But more importantly than appetite to do anything, could we ask the county commissioners or more importantly, public health, how we get our numbers down in the, over the next three weeks? I mean, I feel like it'd be good to go ahead and have this discussion of, here, we have this idea. What else do we need to do to get there? Because we have to get there, so that we can open back up.
Well, I think that's why they put the restrictions in place for Level Red, because that's supposed to help control that. And that's what public health is supporting. And so, and that's why they, you know, close indoor dining to restaurants, because they identify it as one of the higher-risk areas. And, you know, they're having another discussion about limiting additional restrictions on the ski areas in the county. So I think that's what they're doing. And they're saying, this is, these are the restrictions that you put in place with the plan that that's what's gonna lower the numbers. I'm not sure what else they would tell us, because if there was more, they would have, my, I would hope they would have put them in place at the county level. So.
I mean, I'll say, I'll say something that I was thinking about. And, and it's, I don't know if it's, it's, it doesn't really, probably won't, it's not a health inducer. But on, on one side, unless the county does this, what we're doing to our people that are, are landowners or whatever, who paid the rent in the town of Breckenridge, we're, we're saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna shut you down. But the people that didn't buy in Breckenridge can, can function. And if, if there's some parity with the county doing it as well as us, then I'd be more comfortable with doing it. But in, in that regard, I, I, though I do think it might. in in that regard, I I I, though I do think it might have some nominal health benefits, I think the biggest health benefit is 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 if social distancing and do it, I, county, with the county would do it.
I agree with Jeffrey and from just a public health perspective, I think breath just doing this limitation within our boundaries negatively impacts our lodging partners within our boundaries. And then from an, how much is it gonna change numbers? I can see some benefit. Of course, a little bit from public health, but more from stress on our supermarket, on our infrastructure, I think that would have some relief. But I think that county needs to be the leader with any sort of lodging restrictions. And I think, I mean, the state mandated these levels, and I don't know that the state fully considered the unique challenges we have as a resort community. Um, and I would love to see more come out of the county on this. I think this is a county decision to make any sort of impact.
I mean, in the end, you said it, Carol, the the problem is that the state instituted the indoor restaurant shutdown based on the front range, really, in the end. And on their lodging mix with restaurants, not on what we have here. So we still, I mean, and honestly, there are still restaurants that are doing to go that do need to have people in town. You know, the, there are, there are places that are, you know, doing some business at least because there are people in in town, so. So. Sounds like nobody's got an appetite at the moment for doing anything. We will reach out to the county and see if we can press them a little bit more. Does that sound? Good? At least find out why, what their decision, why their decision was what it was. Find out the public health basis for it.
Okay, you know, just a clear, just a word clarification. We don't, I don't need them to lead the way, I need them to partner.
You what?
I need him to partner.
Oh, yeah.
Lot of R's, partner with us.
Yeah, got you on that one. Okay. All right, gang, it is uh, seven o'clock. I'm gonna call to order the town council um. Regular meeting for the twenty fourth of November at seven o'clock. Helen, roll call, please.
Ms. Sunny.
Here.
Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Coon.
Here.
Ms. Gielo.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, approval of minutes, town council minutes for November ten and nineteen, twenty twenty, any uh, buddy, have anything they wanna change, talk about, look at? Yep, minute stand as presented, uh, agenda, Rick?
No changes.
All right, uh, we begin with communications to council. Um, there is a Q and A function at the bottom of your screen. If you have uh, something that is not um, on on the agenda tonight, you can comment on it. I'm gonna give you uh, thirty seconds to type in your question or comment.
And then, while you're waiting for citizens to type in questions, you could let Matt go ahead and give you his BCA update.
That'd be great. Where's Matt? Bring him on.
He's in green.
He's where?
He's in green, he has a green M.
Hey, Matt, we're ready for you to do.
Uh. Oh.
Growl, groan.
Matt's doing a little phantom watching. He just has it on the screen, but he's not really paying attention, it's like me and me and history class in high school.
You can let me. Commander, I'm a panelist, sorry, need to let me. Okay. Uh, my apologies, Matt, he just, he was excluded from the video.
Uh, Chris, he says, are we having a problem with him?
He, Matt, you shouldn't have an issue, you're um, you are a panelist like everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, just share, turn on your video where it says stop video.
Sorry, it was disabled earlier by the host.
Oh, there's the eighth council person.
Yeah.
Matt, can you go ahead and talk without your video?
Ken, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
We'll do that.
Okay. Sorry about that. Um, if the video comes back on, I'd be happy to join you that way. Hi there, so uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for um, the opportunity to provide this update from Recreate. Um, since this summer, we have continued to provide programs and facilities for activities uh, presented in a safe and responsible way. So for example, um, we worked with the local dance school to film and stream the performances for the river, on the Riverwalk stage. Uh, we managed uh, and partnered with Team Summit Ski Swap uh, to create, uh, have that event go off safely within guidelines, including reduced capacity, symptom tracking, one way flow and enhanced cleaning. Uh, the Dia de los Muertos event in the Riverwalk Center was a success in October uh, and managed to strictly control occupancy and maintain social distances uh, with guests viewing from outside through the roll up doors when we hit our limit. Uh, this event primarily served a very diverse group of families. Currently, the first of two uh, Recreate instructor exhibitions in the Old Masonic Hall are running these uh, the first one opened on November seventeenth. Uh, and we'll go through the twelfth of January, and these are open for viewing only outdoors, so we're using the front uh, storefront of Old Masonic Hall. Uh, and so this exhibit, uh, first exhibit features five BC instructors. Uh, and there is information on the window with a QR code to link to artist bios and statements about the artwork. Um, uh, second instructor exhibition is scheduled to open on the seventeenth and run through March. Uh, and this is, this is really, if you, if you have not had a chance to do this or visit our instructor exhibition, it's, it's really a longstanding tradition for BCA to highlight the the local town of instructed instructors and give them the opportunity to present their work to the community. Uh, this winter, we continue to provide uh, space for small arts and craft workshops and activities uh, in the Riverwalk Center, and I think I got video now. Hi there.
Hey, what's up, Matt?
Hey, long time no see.
Oh, Matt.
Um, so uh, we're, we're continuing to do those classes and workshops. Uh, in November, we reserve, resumed classes indoors at the Riverwalk Center along with some limited activities and private workshops in the largest venues on the Arts District. Uh, we were slowly ramping uh, back up and we're seeing around uh, twenty programs per week in the creative corridor uh, prior to the change in health guidance. Uh, so with the move to the red level, we have temporarily halt it all in person programs. Uh, we are working closely with the county to determine the safest pathway forward and which programs can safely open first. Uh, overall, uh, we are working with the resident companies, partners uh, and a handful of third party event requests to determine just what's possible in the venues uh, currently and and going forward. Uh, and while we're talking about venues, just a a quick matter of housekeeping, uh, we are coordinating with the town's IT department to install uh, public wifi around the Riverwalk Center and the Arts District. Uh, and through this process, uh, we're also transitioning all Recreate managed properties to Allo Fiber Internet and phone services. Um, so looking forward, uh, our existing online programs, uh, like Young Writers Club and a handful of limited outdoor workshops like Photography for Hikers and Winter Wonderland Plain Air continue to run uh, safely uh, following strict guidance uh, from the county and state. Uh, public art tours around Breckenridge are still free and available during Level Red. Um, do it with only one household, uh, keep your distance and wear your mask, uh, but it is something that, you know, visitor, the residents and visitors can find uh, uh, and and do, just go to the recreate.org, um, and the tour information and interactive map is there. Uh, we're working with, uh, we're also working with our local artists to identify new online app uh, opportunities that we can kind of carry forward throughout the winter. Um, due to the the health situation, we have made the difficult decision to cancel the Handmade Holiday Event, uh, which was re-envisioned in the Riverwalk Center with new health protocols. Uh, but and since this is an activity that would have helped local artists, artists and their their own business, um, we plan to shift our focus uh, in December to a public campaign to support our local artists. So uh, Recreate's gonna use our digital and social media platforms to really try to connect audiences, first to connect audiences with some of the artists that they would have seen at Handmade Holiday. Um, uh, our plan is to create a more broad sort of brand neutral messaging, though, so that other artists from around Breckenridge or Summit County can use those images, hashtags, uh, et cetera, to try to amplify the message of shop local and support our local artists. Um, uh, and of course, we will work to partner with the BTO and link to any other shop local efforts um, that are are in process. Uh, so expect, you can expect to see more on that um, as we get into December. Uh, just some upcoming winter collaborations. Uh, Building Hope, so Recreate will continue to partner with Building Hope on the Hype Teen Program. Uh, if you're not familiar with it, the Hype is a youth connection program providing free activities and events for Summit Youth ages twelve through twenty to combat the issue of social isolation. Uh, and so this program that we're partnering uh, will run the first and third Thursday of every month this winter, starting in December. Um, uh, BCA is also partnering with Building Hope this year through the Colorado Gives Day on December eighth to directly support this free teen program. Uh, classes will be in person, and that is in accordance with uh, uh, public health guidelines. Um, uh, teens and families uh, can go to buildinghopesummit.org to find out more information and to register. That's great. We're also working with uh, the Breckenridge Heritage Alliance. Uh, Recreate's partnering with BHA to exhibit a photography taken by John Topolnicki, who was a resident of Breckenridge in the sixties and seventies. Uh, the exhibition will be located inside the Riverwalk, um, although we are designing the exhibition to allow for uh, additional other Recreate programs this winter, like, you know, workshops, second Saturdays, toddler art, et cetera, once it's safe to kind of reopen those. Um, so the work that'll feature uh, Topolnicki's photographs is primarily, you know, the newly formed ski area, the town, Uller Parade, uh, and really a lot of never before seen winter photos that can celebrate our community at a really special moment in time.
When is that, Matt?
Uh, well, it's a moving target right now, so we were shooting for December. Um, uh, I think it's gonna depend entirely on sort of where we on our, on our dial, but the goal is to get that up and and keep it through the winter. Uh, and we were, uh, we're gonna focus on probably some set hours uh, on week, uh, weekends. Uh, and actually looking on Saturday and Sunday because we we really are trying to make this accessible for visitors, but also residents. Uh, and and that was a, a, that was where we identified we could at least start. Um, uh, for long time residents, uh, if uh, uh, you might recall, John Topolnicki opened a shop on Main Street called Colorado Photography, uh, where he turned his photos into postcards and posters for sale, so, and this is uh, this gentleman and his family have some, some deep roots in Breckenridge, um, and we're really excited to to share that. Um, uh, so we'll see when we can open. Again, we're, we're on all of our activities, we're really, we're really working close with um, public health. Uh, but the goal is to let this uh, stay up through the winter as kind of a, a safe um, uh, family friendly activity that can happen in the Riverwalk Center. At the same time, when those hours are open, we'll use um, that opportunity to allow to be a, a check in space for activities uh, and workshops happening both inside and outside the Riverwalk Center. So these are all kind of uh, combined and and this is a, an idea and a relationship, partnership that kind of grew out of the, the Resiliencies Family Activities Work Group. Um, I I also wanna just acknowledge uh, the great partners at the Rec Center. Um, uh, the, through our music division, Rec Music, uh, we'd planned a Kinder Music Opportunity for young children in partnership with Rec Center. Um, you know, this December, we had originally, uh, we're look, we were originally looking at a four week program serving a, a couple cohorts of children on Wednesdays. Uh, you know, this again is one of those programs that is paused right now. Uh, so we're gonna kind of reevaluate it as the situation progresses. Uh, but I think, you know, if we can take away something from, from this winter and and the fall, the, the, the collaborations and the, the real e- energy coming from community partners, uh, whether or not we have to temporarily pause programs is laying groundwork for kind of new opportunities we can uh, we can work on with the town and with our um, colleagues to provide animation activity in Breckenridge. So uh, in general, though, we continue to plan scenarios uh, for twenty twenty one, like everybody, it's a, it's a moving target and um, we're rolling with the punches, uh, and our goal is to really provide the most flexibility uh, that will allow us to keep offering meaningful and engaging arts experience to to Breckenridge. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm, I'm grateful for uh, this, this chance, and I would love to respond to any questions you have.
Thanks, Matt. I like the rolling with the punches with Cassius Clay over your right shoulder, that's uh, well done.
Good eye.
Ten out of ten, as they say, right? Anybody have any questions for Matt? No, well, thanks, man.
Good, great job.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we have one, uh, there's one public comment from Bruce Horry at Beaver Run. Uh, we are trying to be compliant with the public health order and have had many cancellations, are communicating with guests and doing the proper restricting to one household and are not the problem. We're pushing both rates and length of stay as we are staff challenged and are not doing fire sales. Enforcement of offenders has started according to county's public health. Uh, we just met with Vale Resorts and Dan Hendershot of co- County Public Health and are working to make adjustments, including canceling Lifestyle's College Group for mid-December, not thinking that it was a safe offering. Beaver Run would like to be part of the discussion as I am sure most of the professionally management managed companies would also have an opinion. Thank you, Bruce. That's what we expected from a, from a big partner like, like Beaver Run. Um, okay, that is it for uh, public comment. We will move on to continued business, starting with the second reading of Council Bill number thirty eight, series twenty twenty, an ordinance extending until May twenty six, twenty twenty one, the temporary moratorium on the submission acceptance, processing and approval of any application for a town of Breckenridge development permit that includes as a part thereof an amenity club. Tim?
Um, in May of this year, the council adopted a six month moratorium on the submission of development permit applications that have uh, included an amenity club. The purpose of the moratorium is to allow the staff and ultimately the council to review the anticipated impacts of amenity clubs on the town and to determine whether we need uh, additional or different um, rules in place. Um, staff has indicated they would like to have and need uh, more time to complete the work required of them. Um, and I think the council will need some additional time uh, to, to do, uh, to review the staff's work. This ordinance, if adopted, would extend the temporary mori- moratorium until May twenty six, twenty twenty one. Um, there are no substantive changes to the ordinance from first reading, however, the ordinance that's in the agenda packet has now been drafted as an emergency ordinance. Uh, the adoption of this ordinance as an emergency is necessary because uh, if it's adopted as on a non-emergency basis, it won't go into effect for thirty five days. Meanwhile, uh, day after tomorrow, the temporary moratorium will expire. So it's staff's uh, request and and uh, recommendation to the council that the ordinance be adopted in the form that's in the agenda packet. Um, and uh, that will make it an emergency ordinance, an emergency ordinance, assuming that it's passed by five affirmative votes tonight.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? Now, anybody in the public wish to comment on this second reading? You have thirty seconds to comment in the Q and A function at the bottom of the screen, starting now. Kelly, at one point during the childcare discussion, I thought you had cut your hair. Because the way it was laying on, on your.
No, my hair, Aaron and I were just having this discussion, my hair just, her hair, everybody's hair is just getting longer and longer during COVID.
All right, there is no public comment. I will close the public comment and move on to ask for a motion.
I move past on second reading Council Bill number thirty eight, uh, the series twenty twenty, the title which is in the agenda packet, the form that's in the agenda packet. I move we pass on second reading Council Bill Number 38, Series 2020, the title which is in the agenda packet, the form that's in the agenda packet.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion by council? Roll call, please, Helen.
It's Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have Council Bill Number 39, Series 2020. This is an ordinance setting the mill levy in the town of Breckenridge for 2021. Also a second reading. Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as discussed earlier this afternoon, this ordinance would allow us to impose a mill levy in order to have, allow the county to collect the property tax that is described in the budget.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on our mill levy, which is the same mill levy it's been for a number of years now? You have 30 seconds. All right, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Move on second reading. We pass Council Bill Number 39, Series 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Second, there's a motion in a second. Any discussion by council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have second reading of Council Bill Number 40, Series 2020. This is an ordinance repealing and re-adopting with changes Chapter 1 of Title 7 of the Breckenridge Town Code, adopting by reference the Model Traffic Code for Colorado 2020 Edition, published by the Colorado Department of Transportation, amending the Model Traffic Code for Colorado 2020 Edition, and providing penalties for the violation of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado 2020 Edition. Tim?
State law allows municipalities in Colorado to adopt their own traffic laws. It is important, however, that those traffic laws be consistent with the rules of the road that apply across the state. The way that is typically done is to adopt the Model Traffic Code that CDOT publishes periodically. This ordinance, if adopted, would adopt the most current version of the CDOT Model Traffic Code, make several local amendments to the code, and allow us to enforce the Breckenridge Traffic Code in the town in a form that is acceptable to the state of Colorado. There are no changes to the ordinance from second, from first reading.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions? Now, any of the public wish to comment on this second reading? You have 30 seconds.
This seems a bit of a housekeeping resolution, isn't it?
Well, it's a little bit more than that, but Jeffrey, it's routine.
Oh, good. Now he's got a new word.
A new word.
It's like Groundhog Day.
Okay.
Just so everybody knows, just so everybody knows, the way this actually works in the real world is we have to send the ordinance to CDOT for their approval before we can enforce it on Highway 9. But that's pretty routine.
There you go. All right, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number 40, Series 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Helen.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, we have a final second reading. Council Bill Number 41, Series 2020, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 17 of Title 1 of the Breckenridge Town Code Concerning Unclaimed Property. Tim?
The town has had in the code book for a number of years our own ordinance dealing with how property that is found by the town staff is disposed of. The state of Colorado last year adopted a new uniform law dealing with unclaimed property. And it, by its terms, does apply to home rural municipalities unless the home rural municipalities take certain action to opt out of that state law. The police department in particular has found the compliance with the new state law to be difficult, time-consuming, and would greatly prefer that we be able to continue to apply the town's ordinance on unclaimed property going forward. This ordinance, if it's adopted, will make some minor changes or some changes to the ordinance to allow the town to effectively opt out of the new state law. There are no changes to the ordinance from first reading.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? You have 30 seconds.
And we have a lot of resolutions in front of us.
Big night, Jeffrey.
Yeah, big resolution night.
All right, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Second reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number 41, Series 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have no first readings. We do have three resolutions. The first is Resolution Number 26, Series 2020. This is a resolution adopting the 2021 budget, making appropriations there for and approving the 2021-2025 Capital Improvement Plan. Leslie?
Yes, this resolution would allow for us to approve the 2021 budget, which is linked and available on the town's website as the 2021 proposed budget.
Any questions about the budget? This will be the second public hearing. Does anybody have a comment in the public? Is your Q and A function? You have 30 seconds. All right, public hearing is closed with no comments on the budget. Is there a motion?
I move we pass Resolution Number 26, a resolution adopting the 2021 budget and making appropriations there for and approving the 2120, 2021 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second. There is a motion in a second. Any discussion by council? No? All right, roll call. I guess we've talked enough.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, Resolution Number 27, Series 2020, Resolution Improving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Town of Frisco Concerning Nordic Centers. Scott?
Welcome to Mayor and Town Council. Before you tonight is a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Frisco, the Town of Breckenridge. It pertains to the Nordic operations, including the grooming that occurs, the joint grooming between Frisco and Breckenridge, as well as some of the past rates and other administrative details that pertain to the operation of the Nordic Centers that function jointly. Be happy to answer any questions.
Scott, thank you. Any questions for Scott? All right, anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution with Frisco? You have 30 seconds.
Scott, when's the Gold Run Nordic Center open?
Jeffrey, it opens on Saturday. This snow has been a godsend. It's been really helpful. The Buffalo Flats Loop prior to the storm was up and running. You know, just kind of with, with man-made snow and some harvesting of snow off of the parking lots, but this really helped us get the rest of the network at least rolled today, and we'll be able to get some snow on the sides onto it, so.
Might want to put the word out, I'm going to be skiing there on Sunday with a One Piece racing suit. So I think that could help.
Voodoo, Jeffrey.
Might drive some, drive some of our customers away, Jeffrey.
Yeah. Never that hoodoo. It's a dalliance on hoodoo voodoo, right?
Yeah, all right. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
Yes. I move we pass Resolution Number 27, Series 2020, Resolution Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Town of Frisco Concerning Nordic Centers.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion from the council? All right, roll call.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have Resolution Number 28, Series 2020. This is a resolution improving an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Revenue concerning the sales and use tax software known as the SUTS system. Leslie?
This resolution.
Careful around that motion.
Right.
This resolution would allow us to participate in a statewide portal where we could collect sales and sales tax from businesses that do not have a physical presence within the state and not making it overly burdensome to do so. And this would allow us to level the playing field with local businesses that do have a physical presence and have been collecting our sales tax.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions? No? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this? You have 30 seconds. All right, that's the end of the public comment. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move we pass Council Resolution Number 28, Series 2020, a resolution improving an government agreement with the Colorado Department of Revenue concerning the sales and use tax software known as the SUTS system.
There's a motion in a very quiet. Is there any further discussion by council?
I do a lot of the heavy lifting, making these motions. I'd appreciate a little bit more prompt second if people are so inclined.
Roll call, please, Helen.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giello.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. Planning Commission decisions. Any call-ups? No, Planning Commission decisions stand as presented. We do have a town project, the Milney McNamara House and Everline House Rehabilitation, Relocation and Site Modifications. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll keep a fairly short presentation here this evening on this. This is located at 102 South Harris Street, and the Breck Heritage Alliance is the one proposing the modifications that you've seen in your packet. There's a detailed information in the packet regarding the analysis of the development code and the point analysis that goes with that. Larissa O'Neil is on the call as well and is available to answer any questions, and she's the Executive Director of the Breck Heritage Alliance. So this is a town project because the town owns a property that it's on, even though the BHA is proposing the project itself. As such, it's not subject to our development code. It's entirely up to the discretion of the council to approve this or not approve this project. However, we do go through a regular hearing process with the Planning Commission, and we do analyze it per the point analysis, which we've attached to this application. And so they're proposing to rehabilitate and restore two historic buildings here, the Everline House and the Milney House, and also install three parking spaces with a number of other minor modifications as well. They're going to use these buildings for public exhibition space, collection storage for the BHA and some staff offices. And a flex room in the Everline House for a different type of small public gatherings. The Planning Commission reviewed this three separate times this year, in two hearings back in the spring, and recommended approval. The one thing I wanted to note, and I'll mention this in a little bit more too, is that the Planning Commission's recommendation was a positive two points. Actually, we think that was a mistake. It's actually a positive three points. And that's outlined in the analysis that you see as well. We did receive a number of public comments on this during the Planning Commission process and then afterwards as well. And they really focused on several things. One, the use, the office use in this neighborhood, which is, you know, largely residential. Secondly, parking concerns about the number of parking spaces proposed by the alley in the rear. And then thirdly, there were some concerns from the Wellington Square Homeowners Association about the maintenance of that alleyway. They're entirely on the hook for that right now. They're required to do that per their plat and approval into perpetuity. Anyway, so in response to that, and since the Planning Commission meetings and the final hearing from the Planning Commission, the Heritage Alliance has done several things. One is they've reduced the amount of parking spaces in the rear from six to three. One of those is an ADA space, which obviously would be required. Secondly, they've increased the snow storage on the property, which is another, which was another concern that we heard from some folks, is where are we going to store snow? If you have six parking spaces, well, they freed up some more space to store snow from the plowing that goes on there. And finally, the Heritage Alliance is going to be assisting in the plowing of that alleyway where it was entirely up to the Washington Square Homeowners Association or Wellington Square Homeowners Association to do that until this point in time. So the one thing I wanted to point out is our code technically would require six parking spaces. That's just how the math works on that. So we have included a finding in your packet that basically allows that to go to three instead of six if the council decides that that's appropriate. As I mentioned, Larissa and I are here to answer any questions. One thing I did want to follow up on from the work session today, I believe Eric, you may have asked about this, in terms of an expiration date on the project. Because it's a town project, there is no expiration of the permit itself. Because the code is, the code does not technically apply to this project. So I checked with Tim Berry. We talked about that afterwards. So there is no expiration on this. So it's not, it wouldn't be an issue if they came back in four years and had to do it. It would still be applicable. The permit would still be valid. Finally, I just mentioned that if, if, if after we have these discussions tonight in the hearing, if a council member feels inclined to make a motion to approve this, on the bottom of page 111 of your packet, under planning commission recommendations, it says the planning commission recommended that the town council approve. The person that was to make a motion would simply say that the town council approve and then go on to say the Milney McNamara House, da, 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 da. And the only other thing, I would replace the two points there with three points, as we mentioned before. With that, that's the end of my presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions. Larissa is here and available also if you'd like her to speak to you or answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, who's got a question?
No questions. I think Larissa did a really good job of explaining everything to us earlier and now Mark did as well.
Just FYI, I don't think I'm going to make this motion. Okay. A little confusing. Okay.
And Eric, there are some comments in the chat too.
Yeah, I'm going to read them into the record when we go to public comment.
Okay.
This is just questions from the council right now. Mark, in regards to all the in regards to all the, the questions from the, the public and in particular the neighbors, did Larissa feel or do you feel like you got at least? It sounds like the parking piece got resolved. It doesn't sound like the office piece really got resolved or am I not correct?
Yeah, you know, Eric, we heard from maybe two or three people on that. A lot, a lot of them didn't mention it. In terms of the office piece, yeah, there were still some concerns about it from a couple neighbors in the area. We had our original response on that based on discussion with Tim Berry was we consider that whole use at the property institutional in nature and we've got a definition of that in our code. And that it really, because it was used as a museum of sorts already, we haven't really changed the use to a significant level. You know, the staff offices are like 40% of the space. So the thought there is that there's still incidental to the primary use of the property. And so staff nor Tim Berry felt that it was a concern in terms of it not fitting into the land use district, which is residential. It's still allowed. Secondly, I think the other issue with that is even if determined that it wasn't appropriate, as our code works, we don't just prohibit a use, we'll give it negative points. So we have that in many cases where, you know, you have commercial, we've got commercial out on Airport Road. And if someone proposes residential, they get negative points and then they just need to overcome them. So in this case, in a worst case scenario, if it was determined that it deserved negative, it deserved negative points, it still could potentially get to a passing point analysis and I'd have to double check on that. But with minus three, it could be offset by the plus three that we already have recommended from the planning commission.
Thanks, Mark. Any other questions for Mark? Okay, I know there's already been some public comment, but I will give the public another 30 seconds to add any additional questions, then we'll read and answer what we can. Okay, I'm going to start reading and answering these as we go. The first from John Kreider. He says, the Wellington Square PUD requires the HOA maintain the alley in perpetuity. BHA agrees to plow its parking spaces, places and the entry to the alley when our plow service is the first on site. Any other agreements should be between the town and the HOA. I assume that is a statement. Is that a correct statement, Mark?
Yeah, but I think his lower question is the real question. He wants to know the town.
Oh, will the town contribute to the maintenance of the Harris Alley?
Where's, Eric, I would propose that we're not going to commit to that. I think I need to understand what their, you know, BHA will be adding, you will now be a shared user of that alley. And if anything, it would be BHA, but we fund BHA. So I need to understand that a little more.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Page 170 states the following. I don't. Not sure what that one means. From John Kreider also is with, oh, maybe, okay, never mind. That's what the page 170. Okay, so you'll, you'll handle that one. Rick Glom asks for the Milney project. Will the Harris Street frontage remain no parking?
I'm assuming. Have any reason to change. I'm not familiar, but if there's no parking on Harris Street already, we wouldn't change that.
Okay. Okay, so that, Rick, that'll, that will be stay as it is. And then Rick did say the town project note was news to me with just last week, getting my first mailed notice would be nice as an adjoining property owner to get some previous message. Any ideas? Rick, if you can put your address in for us to see and Mark can figure out why you didn't. If you're within 300 feet, you would have gotten notice.
Yeah, that's correct, Eric. We changed that requirement, as you remember, a few months ago at the council's direction, so that everyone within 300 feet was noticed.
314 Lincoln, right across the street. So he should have gotten noticed. Mark, could you look into that, please? Deb Edwards says, as I have indicated in my comments in the past, both in writing and at the virtual meetings, I'm still opposed to the relocation of the outhouse from behind the Milney House to the view corridor between the Milney and the Everline. I don't love the split parking locations. However, I can live with the reasons for the recommendation. Thank you, Deb. Alrighty, so Rick will reach out to Mr. Kreider to answer that one and you will find out what happened with the indications from Mr. Glom. Anyone else?
Eric?
Yes.
We had Jay Nelson has had raised his hand to speak and Chris has asked him to put his question in the Q and A. So you have another one.
Will the height of these buildings ever change? I do not believe so, according to the plan, right, Mark?
No, that's correct, Eric. And we, you know, these are historic buildings, so we wouldn't support any change to the height because that would affect the historic character of the buildings.
Thank you, Jay. So that's a, that's a no. Tim?
I want to make sure the council is aware because it may not have been brought out that the Milney property was given as a gift to the town by the estate of Alice Milney in 1988. And it was a condition of the deed, which the town accepted, that there be a park on the property called the Alice B, Alice B, Alice G, Milney Park, and that the property not be used. That is, it must be used as a park. And what we were, what Mark and I were talking about is we believe that the small incidental office space as proposed here does not change the overall use of the property from a park that would be prohibited by the condition of the deed. But I wanted to make the council aware of that.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else before we move to a vote or a motion on this? Motion to either prove or deny? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that the town council approve the Milney project, knowing that it may not be funded to sometime in the distant future.
Didn't he have to say?
Yeah, Dennis, there's a full on motion in the packet with the point analysis.
I'll take that one, Eric. I'll, I'll make a motion that town council approve the Milney McNamara House and Everline House rehabilitation, relocation and site modifications, town project. PL dash 2020 dash 0037, located at 102 North Harris Street with a passing point analysis of positive three points along with the attached findings. I'm proud to second that motion.
Hope you took some notes, Jeffrey. There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'm still not terribly comfortable with this. I will tell you.
But the deal is, this is, this is just approving the planning process. We're not committed to fund this if at all, until down the road, until we're more fiscally solvent, if, if that point in time comes, right?
And BHA is a very good partner for us. They'll be patient.
They, they all need to understand, they need to be super patient. I mean, in the list of things that we need to do, when we come out of this, this is not near the top by any stretch. I mean, I just, I cannot reinforce this enough. That's why this, you know, boards change and boards like to do the stuff that they've been elected to do. And in a year or two, if there is different board members and they feel that this is an imperative because the town obviously has passed their project. The town definitely wants this. That is always my concern when we do something like this at a point where we have no, absolutely no desire to do this right now. And that, that is my concern. So.
Well, I think we do have a desire to continue to preserve our history. So I think, you know, and they've been, this process has been going on for years and years. I think that being in the center of our historic district, it's an important place that I think that in the future, long into the future, for the board will realize that it's in a very important location and as will the council.
Eric, I agree with yours and Kelly's comments and, you know, I, I think it important that we preserve those buildings and keep them from further deterioration as well. But I totally agree. This, this is not going to be an immediate priority. We've, we've got, we've got some higher priority projects.
Anyone else? All right, roll call, please, Helen.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Alrighty, let us move on to a report of town manager and staff.
Nothing.
Oh, nice.
Wow.
Reported the mayor and council members. I did have a phone call with Joe Nagus yesterday, yesterday. Yeah, it seems like a long time ago. Good Lord, man. You know, they're doing what they can to get the Heroes Act passed right now, which is the sort of the first step to some financial aid that the Senate has been stalling on. Hopefully they can get something done. If not, once the new administration is seated, maybe we can get some serious relief. I did let Joe know that in the first round, the town spent a million and a half dollars and received 400,000 in federal funds to backfill that. And I told him it'd be nicer with the million that we are million or more that we are potentially going to put out over the winter time. That'd be nice to get all of that money from the federal government when the time comes. So you know, a lot of the, a lot of the mayors on the call were, you know, agreed, everybody needs help right now. There's a lot of towns that are worried about just businesses going belly up. So we're obviously not alone in the discussions that we're having. They're having, happening all over the state and every ski town in the state in particular. And that's a lot who were on the call, including, you know, Fort Collins is on the call and so is Boulder, but everybody's having trouble right now. So. Yeah.
Do you, other ski towns or other communities doing the stimulus as we are or?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
To a lesser or greater degree?
Yeah, both to a lesser and to a greater degree. Everybody's, everybody's trying something else to keep, you know, their, their constituents whole as far as the business community goes. You know, it's interesting, obviously, the whole restaurant piece is very much in the forefront of everybody's mind right now because that's the sector that's really been closed down. But, you know, everybody talked about other sectors too. There was one stray comment to Joe about climate change, which came right after my comments about, you know, federal dollars. And it was funny because everybody after that comment was like, yeah, climate change is really important. But right now we need help with COVID. So, you know, this is on everybody's mind. I mean, you know, we all agree that climate change is a big deal, but right now I think everybody is so desperate to save their towns. It was interesting because Grand Lake Mayor of Grand Lake is not only having problems with COVID, but they have storefronts that have been so badly damaged by smoke from the fires that they can't reopen. So they have like a double whammy going on there. It sounds like he's done a fantastic job keeping his, you know, his town together. So, you know, Joe gave him great, great kudos for that. So that is all I have. Carol, do you have anything?
Um, I think maybe just events that, events were canceled. And social equity, we are moving forward with the process, hoping to have a commission put together before the end of the year.
Thank you, Carol. Erin?
Yes, we had a BOSEC meeting. And as everybody knows, BOSEC is taking a look at the open space plan and the master trails plan. And so we had a presentation from Lucy Kay, who presented an overview of the Breckenridge Destination Management Plan. Because we felt like, you know, that was, that was really done. There was a lot of public outreach. And if you recall, that was the plan that included more boots, less cars, fewer cars and sustainability and stewardship as a focus. And so Lucy spoke to those components of, of the plan. And she also spoke to, you know, what worked, what didn't work, the importance of the Breckenridge brand and how it's a living document and how it still applies to today during a pandemic. And so then BOSEC also talked about the broadly, a plan for addressing the open space plan and the master trails plan. And so we outlined a very general process and how to move forward at the next meeting, which I think it's actually going to be in the January meeting. BOSEC will divide members into smaller groups and discuss the two different plans and how, you know, a strategy to move forward. And then also staff provided BOSEC with several different examples of plans to draw from to see how other communities have, have addressed it. For instance, in some communities, there aren't two separate plans. And so we talked a little bit about what the benefits of having two separate plans were. And during the next meeting on December 14th, so it's a different date. It's not the, the regular date. It'll be December 14th. It'll be focused on the 2020 field season highlights. If anybody wants to attend that.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Dick? What do you have?
Oh, I think everything I had's been covered.
Excellent. Dennis?
Yeah, the Breck, the Breckenridge Heritage Alliance, they closed the museums last week in accordance with the Level Red. And the restrictions, they've also canceled their tours as well. And then the Sally Barber Mine Restoration has been delayed because of Tony Harris's cruise. So they have volunteers this winter that have offered to shovel off the roof of the Orbin. It was snowed there today. And so we're going to reconvene and try to get that project going next summer.
Excellent. That's an important one before it falls over too.
Yeah.
That's close. Kelly, what do you got?
We've covered mine. Thanks.
Thank you. And Mayor? Thank you. And Mayor Proten?
You know, I've just been out there to assure the people and ours as well, as can be expected.
Thanks for that. All right, anything else for the good of the order this evening? Well, thanks, everybody for joining Coffee Talk this morning and your attention this evening. These tough times. I mean, I can't, I cannot stress enough. How difficult this winter is going to continue to be. This is just the beginning. And I'm sure that, you know, like Kelly said, we're going to. Have to cough up more money as time goes on. And we're going to have to deal with. People that are not happy about orders that come out of the governor's office that. And we can't really do anything about, but that's. There's all kinds of stuff you can read right now about. About businesses that are deciding that they're not going to close. The governor talked today about. Restaurants who decide they're not going to close, potentially losing their licenses because those are. Those food licenses are run through CDPH and liquor license are also run through the state. So. Anybody out there that doesn't like it and wants to keep open, you can do it, but you run the risk of being out of business. So. It's a tough stand to take right now, especially when, you know, today we hit 2,000 deaths again in the United States, first time since May. And that's just going to get worse also. So we're just trying to do what we can to. Protect the citizenry. And I know sometimes some of these decisions sound harsh and. Sometimes they sound, seem weird when we don't want to shut down lodging, but honestly, these are not, not. Easy decisions to make. So thank you for your time and everybody have a pleasant evening.
Peace.
We are adjourned.
Yeah, take care.
Thanks, bye.